Camera is on.
Yeah, the board ready?
We'll call it in order. Roll call.
Basting?
Yes.
Bush?
Here.
Dolphin?
Here.
Gunla?
Here.
Hay?
Here.
Stephis?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Stanford Wood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent's report.
Okay. Just wanted to walk through some of the happenings from the past month. And one of the nice things to report this time of year when we transition from Thanksgiving into the holidays is again our fifth graders wrote the Helping Hands letters that were published in the Wisconsin State Journal. And this was an effort to help those families that are less fortunate. And it's something that's happened again and again. It was really neat to see kids reaching out for help for families that were in need. We have at our school district, the Wisconsin Egg in the Classroom Teacher of the Year, Ms. Livia Doyle, who was honored with that award just recently. And she is also then not only our state representative, but will be forwarded on to a national level for consideration. So we wish her well in her continued journey as the Egg Classroom Teacher of the Year. Shrek the Musical, hopefully everybody had a chance to get out there. I understand some people even went twice. Delightful event and I'm so appreciative of our staff that partook in all the different pieces that go together to putting that production together. And thank you for the Opera House again for a wonderful venue. And look forward to doing it again next year. So we changed from a spring to a fall this year.
How many went to the musical? Wasn't it amazing? It was spectacular. Good job.
Kindergarten Pet Show, hopefully some people had a chance to see that as well. It's always a big hit with our kindergartners, an opportunity to display their creations and show off their pets. The Slate Conference was a conference of Wisconsin Dells around technology. And this is our group of team members, actually there's two tables right behind us. These two tables represented roughly about over two or over a dozen staff members that went and are preparing our schools for an initiative called Future Ready. And Future Ready is really bringing innovation and engagement to the classroom through multiple different wheels and gears that we work through to make sure that our schools are ready and prepared for educating kids of tomorrow. Gallery Night, again a big success where we roasted chestnuts over an open fire. And this is an example of Gallery Night where we have students caroling down the streets of Mineral Point. So again, a great event for our middle school, high school students. Book signing, Mr. Renwick was at Barnes &amp; Noble just the other day. This is his book on digital portfolios in the classroom. So it was a great event, had a chance to support Matt at Barnes &amp; Noble. And hopefully he sold a lot of books. Matt's in the back there. Giving Tree, this is an opportunity where our future business leaders of America organize an event where people could make donations. That just wrapped up on December 8th. And now they turn their attention to wrapping those gifts and started to distribute to our families throughout our district. We have a fifth grade initiative also where we create pen pals. And we're penning to our senior citizens in our area and community. And then they pen back to our fifth graders. And it's a great way to do an intergenerational correspondence and also literacy involved in that as well. The School Holiday Tree is new this year. Esperanza hosted a bunch of trees that were decorated. And thanks to the Lavinger's Links and Francois crew that came out and decorated our Mineral Point Schools tree. And it was a great day for that event. We had students designing holiday cards this year. And I had a ton to select through. Here I am kind of weeding through the process. And the students, there were five students that were selected with designs from multiple grade levels that are elementary that I will use as holiday cards to send out to our staff this year. So I'll be writing some personal thank yous to our students that were selected. It was a tough decision this year. We have just received from our representative Todd Novak. He presented the entire fifth grade with copies of Blue Books, which features our cheese bill. So every fifth grader received a copy as well as some of our teachers and administrators. And again, just a great accomplishment for our kids to not only learn about the process of starting and initiating a bill all the way through its adoption, but the opportunity to network with our local legislators. And recently, a report card, which is on our agenda for later this sport agenda as well, found Mineral Point as a 4K-12 district with the second highest report card score in the state. So there's a lot to be excited about and celebrate. And of course, the kids are cheering just for that reason in this picture. And just looking quickly ahead to the superintendent's calendar, we do have a school board candidate information night. If anybody's interested in running for school board, next Monday evening, we have an opportunity for you to get engaged. It'll be at the elementary library. I believe we have a 7 o'clock start on that? 7:00 PM, thank you. Kiwanis meeting coming up as well. The CISA is a meeting where, the PAC meeting is where superintendents in the area through CISA III get together. This one is really around rural school funding and some of the impacts that some of the more recent bills that have come out have on the budget for mostly rural schools specifically going forward. So that's a big part of our agenda on the 20th. I'd invite all of our board members as well as our staff to our open house at our Options in Education facility. That is again, our alternative school that we have started this year is a next step in our journey. That is located in the corner of Highway 23 and Highway 39 of the town garage area, the old Oberhouser building out there. Please come out and join us around 3:30, 3:45 on the 20th. There'll be some holiday treats out there for you, some cheese and sausage and crackers. And an opportunity for you to see the facility firsthand and ask and answer questions about our options in education school. On the 21st, I received a phone call. I understand Santa plans to visit on the 21st barring no snow and calling school off. So if the weather's right and Slate can get in, I anticipate the staff seeing Santa out around the elementary building area. And that's also the day of our winter concert. I'm not sure if he's flying in for that specifically or not. But again, if you can mark your calendar for our elementary winter concert, it's always a great event. And then finally, a Kiwanis meeting again in January before we meet again as a board. That's looking forward. And the superintendent's report. Any questions?
School board election timeline, look.
Yeah. Andy, can you give us an update on the timeline and where things are at right now?
We have three incumbents, Larry Dolphin, Lisa Hay, and Julie Stevenson. And the deadline for them to sign the file of, or the notice of non-candidacy is December 22nd. And they have all three signed that document tonight. So their intentions are not to run for school board.
Re-election.
Re-election. So therefore, we'll be looking for these three candidates for school board. And the deadline for filing is January 2nd, 5:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Has anybody signed their papers to run yet?
I haven't received any. I've sent out a couple packets, but I haven't received them yet.
Approval minutes. Motion to approve the minutes. Second by Jav, second by Larry Dolphin. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carried. Communications, any board communications received? Citizen communications?
John?
John Murray, Special Education. Item number one, this will be the teacher with an emergency license who will work on the degree. I'm asking the board to re-post the position for a highly qualified teacher with candidate interviews. Number two, newspaper article, academic growth of our student body is evident, especially for students with disabilities. The district had all but closed the educational gap between students with disabilities and students living in poverty when compared to peers in the same grade level without disability or poverty from the superintendent's corner. I ask, what data supports this statement? Testing for levels of the academics, math, reading, science, social studies. What about opting out and alternative testing? And I hope there are no repercussions for speaking up for our students at this time. And only exact complete quotes are utilized.
Thank you, John. Joe?
Yeah.
Joe?
Joe Whitler.
No, I.
My old scratch.
He thought it was for attendance.
I thought it was to get the treats. All right, moving on. Anybody else? All right. Items for action. Approval of high school, middle school roof replacement and metal roof repairs.
I'd like to reintroduce Kevin and Christie and Greg from FEH. And we have representatives from Kramer here to answer any questions. And I know you have some visitors or guests as well. So please reintroduce your counterparts that are here. And just framing quickly, the district desires to repair and replace parts of our roof that have been causing water to leak into the building. And part of that is a metal repair and a rubber roof replacement. And we have met as a finance committee to make a recommendation for the full board tonight with a resolution that authorizes the issuance and sale of a promissory note in the amount of $500,000 to cover those roof costs as preliminarily budgeted. And if so approved, there are a few other formalities that we will go through as well. But before we do that, I want to make sure you have your questions answered with regards to the project itself. And then we can go forward with any motion to award a performance contract first and then apply Act 32 secondly, and then the resolution to secure the roof project third. You'd like to add Kevin or Christie or Greg?
Well, I would just introduce Kyle Kramer.
I'll get it next time, Kyle.
It's all the same, Kyle Kramer. And we would be working in tandem with them as a partner. And we would hold the contract because it's a performance contract, potentially using Act 32 resolution. So any questions you might have about it? Obviously, we've explained it the last time we were here. And we've got some things we could refer to if you've got some questions. At any level of detail, I'd be happy to answer.
Just to refresh the board, FEH would be acting as our design and general contractor?
We would essentially be your design builder, your performance contractor by the letter of the law.
Okay.
And we would engage Kramer Brothers to work directly through us as the general contractor.
All right, to do the actual work.
They would be doing a portion of the work. And they would help us bid some of the subcontractor work. For example, the membrane work, insulation, and some of the sheet metal work.
Okay.
To bring bids back to us and to you.
And that design build arrangement, we have worked together as firms before on that. In fact, we're working together right now in Cubicity under that same kind of design build arrangement.
On the $500,000 loan that the board is going to procure, that is worst case scenario you're thinking at this point?
That's your top end?
That's the top end.
Based on the budget that we had put together, that was at the high end of the range. And that was to do the complete roof replacement. So we obviously haven't bid the work to any roofing contractors at this point in time. And we would put together, we have already put together a list of roofing contractors that we would solicit those bids from. And so then, you know, it's a function of how those bids come in for the final work.
Ken, somebody who's explained Act 32 a lot better than I, Ken, just to let everybody's aware.
Yeah, there's a provision that allows for schools to exceed the levy without referendum for purposes of performance contracting specifically around energy efficiency. And there would be a payback period that can be recognized in this roof replacement.
I have a question about the cost savings on energy efficiency.
Yes.
You'll be providing reports to the board, is that right?
Yes, we're required to provide those reports through the Act 32. And those will be, it'll start with an initial report. As soon as we have this contract underway, they'll identify the energy efficiency related to insulation value. And then we'll have to monitor that on a regular basis to see if there is a definite savings based on the added insulation we're providing at the membrane roofing area.
So you haven't, it's too early to do an analysis at this point to determine what the savings will be?
We calculate preliminary savings and we'll probably do that yet this week.
So at this point though, you don't have those numbers?
Don't have that today.
Is there a chance there would not be savings?
No. So Kramer Brothers through you as the G C. Your contract is with us.
Right.
And we, for the full amount. And they basically are a subcontract to us.
Through you.
Yes.
So then all of the option one and option two is paid out?
Yes.
Is available to bid?
Yes.
Okay.
The masonry work will be self-performed by Kramer Brothers. But their price is very competitive. And we've already seen that in many instances. But the roofing work, the insulation work, the sheet metal will all be bid out.
And this work will take place next summer?
Yes.
So worst case scenario, you get it off and there's mold up there and you have to do more extensive work. Is there a change order?
We'll identify all those potential things. Either we'll come back and say, we've got something that's so extensive that it can't be done for this price. I doubt that that is the case. But it might be something that says, we might have to back off on going around. We were going to do the whole building and replace expansion control joint ceiling. Because it needs to be done anyway. It makes sense to do that when you've got the team here on site to do it. So there's some flexibility to keep it within that number if that's.
And you'll put in parts so we wouldn't know that until each part is done?
That's correct. Till we open it all up.
Right.
If we anticipated significant difference today, I think we would have stopped during the investigation and said, you know what? This is going to be a lot different than what we thought. So we feel like we looked at enough areas of the problem areas together, FEH and Kramer Brothers in that investigation to feel comfortable that what we're doing is going to address the issues. I'd also tell you though, that until you touch every single square foot, you really don't know exactly what you have until you get there. And the other part I would say is that especially with an existing standing seam metal roof and the solution being kind of in simplistic terms underneath that roof to create more flashing and better drainage, it will improve it very dramatically. But there's always potential that it won't cure it absolutely 100%. But it will dramatically change.
And then you may end up having a problem in an area that we're not touching too. So as I think we said from early on, we're, we think we've identified all the areas where there are challenges. Worked with your staff on that. And so we're addressing all of those. I'll make a motion to award a performance contract to FEH.
We have a motion by Andy. Second?
I'll second.
Second, I'll listen. Any other discussion? Roll call, Andy?
Bush? Dolphin?
Yes.
Gunla?
Yes.
Hay?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Stephis?
Yes.
The next motion then would be to utilize Act 32. To just approve the resolution for Act 32.
We have a motion to approve the resolution for Act 32. Motion by Julie. Second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any discussion? We will do a roll call from each.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Gunla?
Yes.
Hay?
Yes.
Stephis?
Yes.
And the file related motion is the motion to approve the resolution authoring the issuance and sale of a $500,000 general obligation promissory note.
Do a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Lisa. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Julie. Further discussion?
Look at, we have the two with the unforeseen and the overhead go over the 500. Would this be completed and the next fiscal year? Would this impact on our budget or that portion of it?
If it goes over budget, you're saying?
Yeah.
I would work with, first of all, FEH to bring other parts of the project scope down to make sure we stay within budget. Mentioning for instance, maybe not going all the way around the building with expansion doors. That might be an option. But I don't anticipate that we're going to look at a scenario where we go over budget without having to revisit that with the full board.
Including the fees?
Including the fees. Have a double check with that. That's kind of an all in number with regards to any anticipated remediation for insulation once we end up in including fees.
Any other questions? Roll call, Andy.
Hay?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Basting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Gunla?
Yes.
Stephis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming out.
Quinn? Approval of financial audit?
Yeah, I think you're good.
You can come up and join us at the table if you'd like.
So I just wanted to kind of go over some of the highlights from the audit this year. That first page there is just kind of an overview saying that we completed the audit this year and issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best that you can get. And we do like to always remind you that these are raw financial statements and management reviewed the financial statements before they're issued and approved, the report and the adjusting journal entries. That next page just kind of highlights the balance sheet for just the general fund, which does include special ed. So for the most part, they're pretty comparable between '16 and '17. There is that $130,000 in the liability section there due to other funds. That's the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvements fund, Fund 46. That at the end of 2016 was not made in the '15, '16 year, so that was made in '16, '17. So that's why it's not shown as a liability at the end of the prior year. And then at the bottom there, it just kind of summarizes the change in fund balance by fund. The general fund did decrease this year by about $47,000. But if you factor in the $200,000 transfer to capital improvements, that was approved at the end of the '16 fiscal year, but didn't occur until this year. If you factor that in, the general fund would have had an increase of about $150,000. And then you can see the capital projects fund increased by the total of that $200,000 and $130,000 transfers. The next page there just shows the trend in fund balance in just the general fund over the last five years. And you have a minimum fund balance policy in place where the school wants to keep at least 15% in unassigned fund balance of the next year's budgeted expenditures, which you are above that 15% threshold, right around 20%. So meeting that minimum. Page five there just kind of shows the revenues between years. And this is all funds. So you can see just, most of them are pretty comparable. The most significant revenues are listed there, state and federal grants. Inter-district did increase to about $95,000 and that's due to the receipts for the alternative school payments in 2017. The next page shows the trend in the tax levy between years. Since 2013, the property tax has gone up about 14% and the mill rate about 7%, which is a little different than the average for Wisconsin districts. Has, the mill rate has decreased about 2%, so it has gone up a little bit in Mineral Point. Taxes are about 36% of your total revenue for both years. And there are some legislative levy limits, but the district has always been in compliance with those. The next page just shows the trend in federal and state revenue. The federal and state revenue accounts for a little over half of your total revenue for both '16 and '17, with the biggest part of that being equalization aid, which is usually about, the last couple of years, been about $4.4 million. And then the next page just shows the change in expenditures between years, which for most part, those were comparable as well. There was a new lease in '16, '17 for some computer hardware. And then there was a little bit more, about $126,000 more of stadium expenses in '16, '17. And then the next page just shows your change in long-term obligations. So there's a capital lease on the books and then a note for the stadium and the energy efficiency loan. But well within the debt limit of $33 million there, so that's about it there. And then the last page just summarizes kind of our findings and comments in the separate letters to the board. The first one, we always, a district this size, we have the finding on segregation of duties, just saying that there's only one or a couple of people in the office that have the responsibility over the entire cash dispersment or cash receipt functions. And the second one just states that we prepare the financial statements, but they are reviewed and approved by management before we issue them. The letter to the Board of Education also states that there are a couple of significant estimates. We use estimates to kind of calculate your vested sick leave liability and the WRS pension liability. That's on your books. And then the manager letter points, we recommend that student activity deposits be made daily. And then with the credit card dispersments, there, we recommend that any employee using the district credit card always provide a detailed receipt. I think that receipts are being given, but they don't always detail what each expense is, just so Marsha or whoever's paying can make sure that it's a valid district expense and it wasn't used for personal items or items that are not allowed. But I thought it went really well this year.
I agree.
As always, so if there's any questions.
Any questions for Quinn? Just want to thank you again. Johnson Box and a great partner. Over the past seven years, I've had to work with you. It's been just a very reputable company. I appreciate the work that you do for us.
Thanks. Always enjoyable coming up here. Always enjoyable coming up here in July. It's enjoyable's audit, sorry, I know for everybody else.
We would need a motion to approve that officially so that we can publish that as a finalized board-approved document.
Do we have a motion to approve the audit as presented?
I'll make one.
Motion by Larry Dolphin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andy. We'll do a roll call, Andy.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Gunna?
Yes.
Hay?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Fasting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yes.
Approval of strategic plan?
We have before the board the two focus areas of the strategic plan and... So the, there was a committee that's met over the past six months. There were three board members that were on that committee that are here this evening, member Gunna, member Bush, and member Stevenson. In the audience, Mr. Rury, Ms. Hay, Mr. Whitmer, our administrative team, anybody else that I'm missing, it was on the...
Crystal?
Crystal, thank you, Ms. Taylor. I think I've got everybody. So thank you for coming out tonight. It's been a good exercise because it was a great cross-representation of community members that came together, some with children in the schools, some without, some that were business leaders in the community, some that just had an interest in seeing our schools progress. And over that time, we had the opportunity to have conversations facilitated by Mary Gavigan. Mary is a former superintendent and now works with CISA as a cooperating agency, and one of her specialties is strategic planning. And I think she did a nice job of bringing a large diverse group of people together around some unified themes and strands. Remember, our old strategic plan had four focus areas. The first part of our review was to see if those four focus areas remained or not. What the group decided was to condense those four focus areas down into two, what we call strategies. The first strategy is around academic achievement, and the second strategy is around community engagement. And so I just want to spend a few minutes walking through those two different strategies because each one has some areas within that that I want to make sure that the board is clear about what the community is recommending, and then ultimately we'd like to approve our strategic plan so that we can take some next steps, which we'll talk about shortly. I'm going to take the first part of the academic innovation and independence strand. I have Mitch coming in behind us to do some additional discussion around this particular strategy. Matt and Vicki are here as well, so if you want to add some bullet points or some discussion points, let me know as well. But the, the first thing I would share that under the academics, academic innovation and independence theme, it's a really broad category, but just think about the words innovation. We want kids to, to create and learn through authentic assessments and play-based and hands-on modeling. And that independence really gets around to having independent learners that are taking charge of their learning process and setting their own goals for growth. So a lot of the strands underneath here are feeding into that larger strand of innovation independence. Notice that we did not change the actual mission statement or our value statements or our belief statements, those remain the same. This was more of a short-term strategy to look more specifically at focus areas. There was five focus areas. The first is on professional development. The community felt strongly that in order for us to be engaged in teaching students for tomorrow, that we need to be up on the latest understanding of how to deliver a good education, and that involves good professional development for staff and administrators. The second focus was on multiple forms of literacy, and I'll come back and get deeper into each of these in just a moment. Multiple forms of literacy moves beyond just the traditional reading and writing and looks at other ways that students can be literate in a global society today. The third is a focus on learner engagement, inclusivity, and teaching the whole child. We'll talk about what each one of those means shortly. Focus on technology integration, and finally, a focus on challenging all students through high expectations. So without going through and reading each one of these, I'll try to, to paraphrase, and then you can go deeper and ask questions as you see fit, as you probably reviewed this already. But the first place I would start is professional development and working collaboratively to really change or continue to change our system to be more of a learner-centered approach. And that's really the foundation of a PLC, those professional learning communities really engage students with what they need and specifically look at the skills that they are in need of remediation, or if they've already learned something, what they need in order to be enhanced and enriched. So that's a real different approach than what most schools are taking. They're trying to do a one-size-fits-all approach, and we're starting to get down to the point where we're really targeting instruction for the learner. So we're going to tightly align our, design our curriculum and instruction around opportunities to engage students in their personalized learning. That's a word you'll hear often in education, when we personalize learning, it's the attempt to break down some of the traditional places around space and time and meet students with where they're at, with the curriculum that they need, when they need it, and where they need it at. We'll strive to provide educators with access to learning experiences that are personal to their professional growth and needs as they're authentic, and foster a collaborative leadership model so that the strategies that are being deployed are not just deployed from the top down from an administrative approach, but really are inherently grounded up and include all stakeholders as leaders in the building. So let me pause there and see if there's any questions or anybody who wants to go a little deeper professional development.
Are you going to have a budget around professional development?
We will, we will budget for professional development, much like we have in the past, but it will certainly be a focus area that we will make sure that we have funds available for our staff to attend, things that are personal and will help us engage the learner.
Will that be teacher-directed? I mean, if teachers need more specific training, or a lot more specific training to make their PLCs more worthwhile, can that be teacher-directed?
It can, yeah, it can be flexible. I think there's two, two thoughts there, that one, we want to make sure that teachers are moving forward within the framework that is our strategic plan, so that we're engaging more knowledge and understanding about what it means to be innovative in the classroom, what it means to engage kids in the classroom, what it means to, to raise the whole child versus some of the traditional approaches to education, but also then specifically in their course content, to be able to say, well, what does that mean in a math classroom? Or how do we deliver literacy in a personalized environment? So have a large strategy overarching that keeps it within some fences, but some individual strategies that allows it to be meaningful for the person where they are in their, their own journey, whether it be an instructional assistant or a teacher, very different trainings.
Okay, I didn't want to forget the instructional assistants in that, too.
Going back to the budgeting, I don't think I've ever seen a budget just for professional learning experiences. And I know that you've spent, I mean, the district spends quite a bit on that already. Can we see a breakout budget?
Sure.
Just this?
Yeah.
And can we see what has been spent in the past? Because certainly the, the school report card would suggest that there've been a lot of good things that have happened, especially at the elementary and the middle school. And this, this team met before the state report card came out. And I wonder if there should be a greater emphasis on the high school in light of the state report card.
But I still think we got into some deficiencies in reading in the middle school, so there's still areas there that, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think that makes sense, I mean, but to use the data to target the areas that certainly need the most attention.
Yeah, I agree.
We first have to understand that, we need to get the data and understand the data, too.
Yeah, and that will tie nicely with our discussion around the report card later, because we do know where we have some shortfalls, and we have some opportunities to target some professional development, those areas make a lot of sense.
I agree.
Most of our, our budget for professional development has come from Title II, which is a block grant from the federal government. That's the majority of our professional development dollars, and we can show that over time. And that'll be probably the, the largest area that we'll continue to use for opportunities for professional development. Multiple forms of literacy is an interesting part that our group and our community kind of got their arms around, because literacy can mean a lot of different things. You can be literate in financial literacy, in technology literacy, we can go down the list of lots of different types of literacies. Ultimately, we wanted to add something that we know we could measure, and we looked at the three newest literacies, which are around media literacy, global literacy, and digital literacy. And specifically, that's publishing and posting material online and being a good consumer of the worldwide web and looking at how to deliver and receive content in a global medium. And to that end, we looked at not abandoning the paper, the traditional literacy, but using this as a way to complement the traditional literacy of writing papers by doing some of the things online, like a literacy magazine, or journalism club, or a school newspaper, but also then including the, the mediums that helped to bring us into some of those newer technology skills, posting photos and videos, blogging, and so forth. So incorporating those into not a standalone club after school, but actually embedding it into what we're doing in the school day. Creating a global presence, we've talked about already our Cornwall Exchange and possibly continuing that exchange beyond just the yearly touches that we have and truly reaching across and having a, a joint global magazine or literary effort that would publish our journeys together and keep that moving forward over time. So more than just a once-a-year splash, but actually building a relationship through an exchange with, with video vignettes and others. Lastly is the work around digital portfolios. Matt has spent a lot of time researching this, and it's, it's great to be able to leverage his knowledge in this area around ways to document their journey in education around literacy as well as other efforts to really create a portfolio of their best works by the time they lead their, their high school experience. I believe more and more resumes and so forth and college applications will probably move into an online environment, and to collect those works from a youngster in elementary all the way through their high school journey and keeping and saving some of their, their most proud accomplishments is really about evaluating your own learning journey and become, again, personalized around what your growth looks like in setting to your own goals. And then the, the group at the elementary has started, but they are going to continue a journey of just examining their own beliefs around literacy and what does literacy look like, what does that mean, and continue on their journey. They've started with professional reaching route men, and they will continue to work with other leading experts across the country to bring some of the best literacy efforts into our schools. Let's make a pause on multiple forms of literacy and see if the board has any questions.
I have a question because, like Lisa said, we haven't got the school report card yet, and so I want to not leave off the traditional writing skills because I just had a conversation with a college professor at Plattville, and she teaches four intro to writing classes at Plattville, and she said she flunked a quarter of her students.
Do you want to do that?
That's a lot for four sections, an incoming freshman, intro to writing, English composition. She fails a quarter of them. And I asked her, how does that reflect on your reviews? Because students give reviews in college. And she said, I was worried about that, and she said, not, not one student gave me a bad review. So that tells me that our high school students are going into college with writing skills that they still need, and argument formulation, just, just basic, you know, formulation of rhetoric. So I don't want to abandon that and usurp it with this. Does that make sense? And so I don't know how we, we didn't know that information, you know, there's some of the, with having this newly in front of us and examining it, which we're here to do, that's, I'm still concerned about that.
I agree with Kelly.
I have a question also, do we teach the cursive writing up here at all?
We do have a cursive writing program, but it's more self-directed than it is embedded within the, the school day.
I'm not going to change that at all.
There isn't any immediate plans to change that?
I think Kelly's point is valid.
So would you like to suggest, or?
I, I mean, is there a, is the intent that you're going to abandon some of the traditional stuff, or is this in addition to?
This is in addition to, so the second bullet point is doing blended literacies in digital and paper. So we're, we're holding onto paper. I don't think anybody's abandoning that, but what we haven't been doing is focusing on bringing the digital literacy into the forefront.
Could I use a change in?
Yeah.
To the point about digital and print, tomorrow I'm talking to fourth graders about my notebooks as a writer, and I've got stacks of them, and it really stressed that a lot of my writing happens on paper. It really, what I, the point is just really engaging kids, when is it a good time to write digitally, when is a good time to write in print? You know, if you don't want to get distracted, you may want to jot some notes down, but it'll be an ongoing conversation about those purposes and why we write. One of the advantages of digital literacy is having an audience, instead of just the teacher, instead of just putting it on the wall, now you can have pen pals with someone overseas, and in safe environments. But good writing is good writing, whether it happens on print or digital.
But that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that...
Well, I was interested per question. Now, your question...
Is that I still think we have some deficiency at the school level.
Oh, sure.
And...
I would say K-12 would have that stuff.
Okay.
But I would, one, the one idea would be to connect with UW-Plattville and say, well, what, our graduates, what do you see them coming in lacking? And then trying to create not just a K-12 curriculum, but really have that '13, '16 grade, those needs, help us and try to really maybe give a ladder of where they need to be, that takes time. Connecting with universities would be something that would be there on our community engagement work.
Because when they get, I feel that when a student gets to a college level or even at a, a work level, they have to have a dialogue with themselves on knowing how to write.
Right.
And then you have the audience from there, but the construct begins with knowing how to write.
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, if I read this, I think you're, you're talking about having different forms of literacy, which would involve more writing in general, which I think that's what's needed, is more writing, so I'm, I'm good with this, I mean, it's...
I just want to reiterate that we would not abandon paper and, and just go to digital mediums. It would be more of an effort to add to some of the paper literacy that we already have in place, using digital formatting.
I, I also see how this focus area in the academic achievement strand of this probably should work into the community engagement as well, because I think there's a lot of just misconceptions about what is literacy means and what writing means and what it... So just to have a dialogue with parents and community members who are not fully understanding and aware of what all of this is as well will help the conversation, and so I think it's an opportunity.
And I've got community members that are in the audience, if there's something that you're picking up from a community perspective or a different lens, please jump in if you feel free to, you'd like to have.
I was just going to comment on that 25% of those students aren't passing those English classes. I teach a section of just the basic intro to college life, and 25% of those students are failing, probably the easiest class that is on campus. It's whether or not they're applying themselves. So are those 25% of those students failing that English class because they don't think it's important? They don't see the positive of writing the paper or why they need to do that? So that might be a question, too, to ask that this form of new literacy is another way to reach out to a student, to get them to be able to write and express, whether it's in the form of digital or writing and so forth. So I think that 25% of those English classes, I think that's happening all across the board and just... in just general. And 25% might be a little high, but is that student really applying themselves in that class and do they see the benefits of writing that paper? Because today I even did a performance review on myself thinking, 25% of my students are failing. What am I doing wrong? And all of them are saying, this is great. I just don't want to do the homework. I don't feel like I need to do the homework. Well, it's, I guess, our job to let them know why it's important and how to get to the next step to do that.
I thought that was only a high school problem.
It's following them.
That's a great segue into that third focus area because that gets to those other pieces that aren't just necessarily academically focused, but we talk about educating kids for being graduates of mineral point of what do we want them to look like? We want them not just to be engaged in school, but have an inclusive environment, but we want to educate the whole child, which are those other things that are intangible that don't really happen in a textbook, but also make a good student. So to that level, developing engaging curriculum that's both local and global with learning experiences and we're talking about real hands-on application of experiences. Looking at how we deliver time, we've traditionally had 45-minute blocks of time at the high school and middle school, elementary the same. It's time to at least look at how we deliver instructional units of time for learning and how that learning space is designed for effective learning. Through the use of technology, we want to really leverage our access to broadband both at school and at home so that we can promote that anytime learning environment, almost like anytime fitness. This would be anytime learning. It doesn't only have to happen between eight o'clock and three o'clock in the school day. This is kind of getting back to where we started with the focus on the whole child through the implementation of mindfulness. Mindfulness is a strategy that's really deeply embedded in research about how, understanding your own emotions and how they play into your readiness to be a learner can really impact your ability to learn well. Understanding that you have anxiety about a test that you're about to take in five minutes and finding ways to calm yourself and get control of your own emotions, whether it be around a test or just around a challenging problem at school, is a great way for us to educate the whole child and be a better learner. A lot of, I'm aware of several large companies like Google and Apple and so forth that mindfulness is, is an embedded part of their corporate culture to prepare people to do some innovative work. The other part is instilling a growth mindset for some of you that might have read Carol DeWitt's work. Empowers people to have confidence, to persevere, to tackle challenged problems. That kind of gets to that piece of just having what I would call grit, to be able to, when you hit a stumbling block, not give up or quit, but to continue to work through and persevere through that challenge and find the reward at the end of that learning experience. And then really working to continue to address the social, emotional, and academic needs of all students. We have some real challenging situations in, in school and at home that the more we can address and prepare kids to be ready for those, meeting those emotional and social needs, the more prepared they're really ready then to focus on, on education. One more bullet point that moved over to the other page. If we have, the largest gap that we have is poverty. Roughly about 30% of our students are in poverty, living free and reduced as one of those indicators of living in poverty. And really as a staff engaging in an understanding and a study about what it means and what it looks like to live in poverty and to learn in poverty and then try to understand how as educators we can better educate kids by understanding how and how best to serve kids that are struggling, you know, in a home of poverty. Those are the bullets that we have underneath the learning engagement, considering a whole child. Any, any clarification, clarifications or questions?
Are there professional development? And so do you see professional development needs change? I mean, mindfulness is a big thing and I think the growth mindset and mindfulness is something that teachers are going to get, have to sort of get on board with. It's a pretty personal kind of journey. And that takes a lot of time, I think, for people that are going to be able to teach it and implement it while it's going to be a.
And it has to be a bind with the parents because the parents may not, they may choose other forms of.
And it starts with.
Parenting and mindfulness.
Right. If this was adopted, it would start with education and what does research say about mindfulness and its effectiveness? Because that in itself is where it starts, is what will this strategy deployed correctly do to help our students learn? And we're already doing some small work around mindfulness at the elementary. Carla Rand has spent some time working with students around mindfulness activities. So I'm already seeing it kind of permeate already just naturally, but to formalize that process because every student, every staff member can, can be a more effective leader and/or learner if they're deploying strategies that are known to be researched and evidence-based, to be best practice or better practice. So to that point, we start with education before we just jump in. And I don't see this as a three-year journey and then done. It is truly a journey and this is something that in three to five to seven years, it may not become a focus area, but it's something that is, is a culture shift of how we deliver, how we deliver strategies to, to help kids and assist kids in learning. The fourth area was a focus area last year, or in the last strategic plan, but we moved it into technology integration underneath the academic innovation and independence. We didn't see it needing to be a standalone. We saw it more as something that's intertwined or embedded with what we should already be doing in the classroom. So we're not just going to push out technology, we're going to infuse technology within what we're already doing. Some of those areas that we've mentioned is the Future Ready Initiative, which really looks at how we're preparing kids for being engaged as, as students of tomorrow. And that isn't how we use just computers and apps and so forth. It's much more comprehensive. It's almost a strategic plan inside of a strategic plan. Implementing the four Cs was something that you might recognize from our past strategic plan. We did not believe that leading collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and communication in the past was the right thing to do. That's still a very prominent part of what we should be engaging kids around. Project Lead the Way continues to have or offer additional opportunities that we haven't yet leveraged. At the middle school, the Gateway Program has about 12 different modules from science and STEM activities to computer coding and applications to, there's one around flight and simulation. There's places for us to continue to bring in different types of activities and, and help our students be more prepared for the careers that they might want to explore further in high school. At the Project Lead the Way, at the high school, we do not have a computer science class and we haven't worked into the biomedical sciences yet. So those are two areas that we can continue to explore, expand our offerings. Maker spaces are starting to come into our schools. Robotics are starting to come into our schools. We see ourselves utilizing more experiences around that and teaching kids how to create and, and explore using the tools that will be part of our industry tomorrow. And even to the point of leveraging kids in their own levels of expertise, creating our own genius bar, if you would, from the Apple Store concept where they are solving problems, not just for other kids, but for staff and leveraging some of their skill sets to help us make our school district stronger. Any questions on the focus on technology integration? I would focus the key on integration.
Do you foresee hiring an additional teacher? I mean, you've got two, at the high school level, you've got computer science, biomedical science, and then you say two or more engineering courses. Would you foresee that the existing staff would be teaching those classes?
We would start by trying to leverage our existing resources and build on our existing capacities to the extent that we could. We've already had conversations around what our on-court teachers that are teaching the rotations in seventh and eighth grade could possibly pick up as a Project Lead the Way launch course, which is a nine-week course rather than a year-round course. That would give some touches and it makes some natural sense to, to reshift some of their responsibilities in areas that are already based around science or technology or engineering, which courses they're already delivering. But in some areas, we don't have anybody that has a licensure around coding or how to code. We do do a day of code, we bring it in on a minimal level, but if we're going to down the road get serious about having a program for that, then we may have to look at staffing. But that wouldn't be part of our short-term plan. I think it would be to reallocate our existing staff to leverage our boost consortium. There is a teacher that was just recently, last year, teaching an advanced placement in coding at Pecatonica, but there was prerequisite course for that, which we don't offer, and that was a problem for our students to be able to get it to the AP offering.
What was it?
It was just a kind of a coding basics before you take the advanced placement. And again, we have to look at building in those types of courses and how would we deliver them in order for us to really create that, that area, that niche within our school district.
Do we teach trig?
We do teach trigonometry, yes. So no, I don't want to suggest that this is committing the board to hiring another full-time staff member, but if we continue to move forward and there's interest and it's, it's infusing skills that students will need for 21st century jobs, it might make sense to, to explore how do we deliver that? Whether that be shared staff between school districts. I don't think we have the capacity right now to, to put a full-time person in place for all of our needs.
I think we did maybe try to get Dan Roddy back.
Yeah.
Doesn't he teach?
He does. This, this would have been exactly where he was probably five years ago. He was exploring heavily of trying to get a technology department going and we just simply weren't ready yet with where we were in our academic journey. But now that we've arrived, we would have certainly benefited from a resource like a Dan Roddy.
Like some of the other schools in the, in the boost, in our system, they.
They are, and that's where there's an opportunity to leverage. Andy Paulske did a site visit to Darlington. They have found some creative ways with the staff that they have to offer the full suite of Project Lead the Way at the elementary, middle school, the Gateway Program, and then they have a few of the offerings that we don't have at the high school. And so that was part of our preliminary work in anticipation of this being moving forward is to, to learn from our counterparts how they've been able to do that and then try to implement some of those strategies that work in our own school district. And then we can start to leverage across districts possibly. I'm going to turn it over to Mitch and give my voice a rest and allow you to take on this final focus area on challenging all students through high expectations.
In a, in a high school, Kyle Carey teaches, or can teach Principles of Engineering or Intro to Engineering Design. He is, we are part of a consortium of other schools with Plattville, Iowa Grant, Highland that kids can pick up a couple of the other classes in the engineering area through some of those other classes, or through some of those other school districts. So I would envision if this is growing, that we would try to do the same kind of thing with surrounding schools. Nobody can afford to hire enough staff to offer all of those kinds of things. So it would be a, we could do this, if you could do that, kind of a thing as we move forward there. Challenging all high schools or all students through high expectations, using a lot of the ACT as, and what the state is defining as college and career ready. So tracking information, being able to report out GPA 2.0, 2.8 on a 4.0, advanced placement exam scores of a three plus. A three in most colleges will get you some credit going in. Some schools are now saying they want at least a four or better, but most of the universities will take at least a three on an AP exam.
Can we see the data, like to date on that? I don't think that's ever been, you know, shared, shared with the board, at least in recent years. I mean, you know, we've had students taking AP exams for years now.
Yep. I, I do not have that with me tonight, but I know I have the reports in my office that I can certainly report that out.
And to that point is if we start to collect and, and hold that data in a dashboard, if you would, so that we have it always in front of us. What gets measured gets done a lot of times is the saying. And so if we're measuring this on a regular basis, we can see areas clearly that need attention and that we can build some smart goals around. And that will be the next phase of this is collecting the data, getting it out there publicly, but then putting some plans around that together.
In addition, I think we should track students who take AP classes and then do not take the exam.
We do in some ways. I think that, that is referenced. I thought that was. So we can just take this the next step.
It would be easy enough to collect that the, every year, I mean, if we have 30 kids in an AP class and 15 take the exam, write the exam, I mean, that's easy enough to collect at the end of each year. And you see on there, it also talks about even just kids who have taken an AP class and what grades tracking, what grades they have. And in a lot of conversations, and I intend to support this one for mineral points purposes, and it will certainly go the direction you, you direct me to, but the dual credit is something I see as having more value for our kids because it is, you take the class, you earn the grade, you are, you're getting college credit. Currently, we have 11 students in a music and cultures class. That's, that's called a CAP class. So students are really earning a three credits through UW-Oshkosh for successful completion. We have 14 students that will be signed up to take the English Lit class through UW-Plattville second semester. Again, all 14 could be walking out of here with a three credits of college under their belt. We are looking at offering an intro psych through a college kickstart program at Southwest Tech. We have 23 kids who have expressed interest. We just need to make sure they get signed up. That would be a second semester course offering as well. And then also Scott Schmitz, every kid has to take a FIAD credit. They go to a four-year school and through Scott Schmitz, they can pick up a credit in archery through UW-Oshkosh. So really trying to push the number of high school kids that can have college credits without having to pay for an exam like AP requires is something that I think the boost consortium is behind. I believe Mr. Paulske and I are certainly behind trying to provide more of those opportunities for our students before they leave here. Tracking, you know, Algebra II, A, B, or C. If I look at this year's senior class, so most, most juniors would have had Algebra II. 91% of our current seniors went through Algebra II with at least an A, B, or C. Potentially exploring the International Baccalaureate exam, becoming an IB school. Again, I would certainly follow the direction of school board. It's not something that I would necessarily recommend, just doing some simple research. If we're going to become an IB program school, there's a $4,000 cost to be a part of that and then you pay the $9,500 annual fee to continue to be an IB school. And I'm not sure that that would get us, get our students any further ahead compared to being able to offer more dual credit options and having students walk out of here with 18 to 24 credits under their belt. I, I think that would certainly do them probably more justice going into college and, you know, in the long run, probably would save the students themselves a great deal of money if I can walk in with a year to almost two full years of college credit under my belt.
That would be one that we would recommend reviewing. We left it on for the board because that was part of the strategic planning process, but as we investigated that more, we're not sure it's the right fit for.
I think it would involve a pretty significant overhaul in your curriculum.
Correct.
I mean, it's not just an exam. It's that you get a degree, an international baccalaureate degree, and you take certain classes and.
Right. And there's where the cost.
I can understand, I can understand how you would determine that it's not.
And there's where a lot of the added costs come in. For students that take an AP class and take an exam, it's $92 to take the exam. For an IB student, they pay $172 registration fee and then they pay $119 per subject. So I mean, there's about a $20 cost increase per subject for that.
Was that something that the committee suggested or that you put on there for us to examine? Where did this come in? International Baccalaureate?
I think it was one of the things that is, that is kind of a, a high standards academic achievement kind of a thing. So I think it was added in there for, just for us to continue to explore and, and exploring the additional costs that go along with it. Yes, and I agree. I mean, it is a complete overhaul. It isn't just one teacher saying, I want to offer an AP Calc class. This is multiple teachers within the program, within subject areas going this direction.
It's like, it sounds like a prep program, like a prep school program, more, more.
It's not all prep schools. I mean, you can have public schools.
No. What I'm saying is that the rigorousness of it would be different.
Sometimes when you look at national rankings of schools, they'll have. Sometimes when you look at national rankings of schools, they'll have, they'll give them points for having an IB in the program.
And then in my seven years here, I think we've had less than 10 students who have taken the SAT exam. Students that are exploring either the coasts for colleges will write an SAT exam. Midwest schools, all are looking for the ACT. So we have, the benchmarks there are what ACT says you have the most likelihood of passing college class in English, reading, science, or math. If your ACT scores in those subject areas hit those benchmarks, and we can track those things.
But the kids are taking the PSAT?
Some students are taking the PSAT, correct, which is basically a practice. So I mean, we just receive scores there end of the day today. I think we just got some of those reports back. And they took that in the earlier in the fall of the year. Again, continuing down, additional factors that contribute to post-secondary, A's, B's, and C's, FAFSA completion, which is an interesting one. Mr. Paulskill and the Darlington School District have, I'll say, an expert, somebody that is much more knowledgeable in FAFSA and has a lot more answers. Darlington and Interpoint have partnered the last several years. Who hosts the meeting? But it's open to junior parents. And it's tonight for parents and students to come in and kind of hear about FAFSA and the process and how to go about filling it out. So tracking completion of getting that taken care of. This would be an additional step to say, yeah, I've at least done that. Maybe I'm not going to school, but I at least done the FAFSA part of this. So I know, do I qualify for some kind of financial aid? Question, Lisa.
Yeah. Can we go back up to the ACT? We didn't talk about those numbers, really.
Sure.
Are those, are these goals, those numbers there?
Those, the numbers that you see there where it says English 18, reading 22, that's what ACT has determined. If a student in the English section, subsection hits an 18, they are saying that there is a 75% likelihood that they will get at least a C or better in a beginning English class at college.
So for purposes of this strategic plan, are you going to set goals around these ACT numbers?
I don't know that I would set a goal. That is ACT's goal, so we would certainly be pushing our students and working with our students to try to hit those numbers.
But wouldn't that be lowering the bar? I mean, our students did better than an 18 in English. In the last two years, we've had 19 or 20 in English.
I see this as setting, again, a minimum score in parentheses, as setting a minimum standard for all students to strive for. So there are many students that weren't scoring, for instance, an 18 on their English. And what are we doing to try to specifically target those skills to make them college and career ready at a level of 18? That doesn't then dismiss the kids that are already scoring higher than that. What can we do to continue to develop their skills? I think this creates a minimum benchmark that we must strive for all kids to meet. And obviously, if the bottom is coming up, our overall composite is going up. So that's what I see is, in my interpretation of using those minimum scores.
Okay. So, and this is maybe, I don't want to prolong this, but like, so far, strategic plan, we're putting, we're putting goals in place, we're putting a number that we're striving for. If two years go by or a year go by and we realize we're not hitting those numbers, where's the accountability? Does it come back to, you know, because you could easily say, well, the students didn't reach that. But so what are we doing as a district to make sure that there's something happening that's?
That will be, and this is where we'll go next, is if the board approves a strategic plan, then we start to attach SMART goals to them. And SMART goals, again, are specific goals that are measurable at the end of the year, attainable, the results base you can look at, and somebody should clearly say, yes, you hit the target, or no, you didn't, and they're timed out. So within one or three years, we will blank. Then who's responsible for that? The person. And what are the actual steps underneath that? What are you doing? And then that's the part that you report and monitor. It's like, obviously, those three steps that you implemented, if you did it with fidelity, didn't work. So what are you going to do next to try? So it's not just a lofty goal that we're really not trying to focus in on. And I think that's been part of our success of our recent strategic plan and our academic success is that we've put some specific targets down. I mean, we haven't shared them as explicitly as we could, but we've been clearly monitoring our data for improvement. And this would be the part of the board to come in and say, I understand that your focus is a lot of things to measure. We're probably going to whittle that down to a few things that the board's going to agree on that we're going to get really tight around. And then those tight things, you're going to ask us for that plan and who's responsible for it. And then you're going to report out at the end of the year, how did it go? It's challenging that the results don't come out immediately when you take it, but it's a continuous improvement process. That here is the goal, here's what we did, here's the plans, and then we rebound.
So this is not that time.
It is not that time yet.
But because we need to approve to say, yes, now start an action plan around this.
Yes.
So my concern could have come under the ACT exam and what, when I was talking...
Absolutely. Yeah.
So this is where it could have addressed that.
And still can. So we're still at, you know, if the strategic plan is a 30,000 foot, these get down to about 15,000, but then we need to really get tight is our next plan.
And you'll come back to us, when is that?
Yeah, so the, where the community at large, we're on these large focus areas. That's where the community engagement out here said, these are the five areas we want you to focus on. So our team came back and we wrote the specific bullet points underneath these that are action plans, if you would. Brought that back to the committees, and the committee said, yes, thumbs up, those are good action plans. We tweaked some of those. And then once we brought them back to you, if we get this approved now, we break each one of those action plans down into some subset of SMART goals that are really actionable items. A kind of master grid that you'll know who's accountable for that and who's oversight is underneath each one of those areas.
So...
So approve this plan, we can get to work. But that's, we felt like we've been kind of not really ready to go forward until we know that the board is on board because we will start, like to your point, start to budget for some of these strategies. We'll start to put some initiatives in place, start to move forward in this direction over time. As I look at this, it's, this is a pretty rigorous plan. I would consider it a real challenging plan, but I think it's also a doable plan. And that's where I don't think we're ready to check these boxes in three years. I think it's a check-in in three years, but I think some of these are going to be more like five-year issues to be handled.
Well, you'll be able to prioritize some of those in three years, doable, four years or five years? And we used to, we used to, we used to do that, was?
Yes, and that's a great point, is that many of these things will have to be phased naturally because we can't start a full-court press on all of these five focus areas and all the bullet points. So some of these actually build off of other pieces too. So we would put a mindful exercise together with a, an exercise that would look at, I just losing the word right now, the whole child mindfulness along with the growth mindset. We wouldn't do that book study concurrently at the same time because it's, where's our focus? You know, so we might build on the perseverance aspect after we've got the mindfulness aspect rolling in embedded. So this will need to be phased in over time.
So we tabled this last time because we wanted, it was late in the night.
It was.
Did we, I mean, has it, does it, I feel like, maybe it's just me because I was on the plan, but I remember, I feel like we've heard this a bunch. Did anyone, when they read through this in the packet, have any strong objections or?
Well, I did, but I was told that we couldn't change anything, so I motion that we go ahead and approve this.
I did have one, I don't want to say it's a strong objection, but in the community engagement part, under connecting community and board, there was something about, we understand that advocacy is part of the board's business. And we specifically sort of rejected that as a policy about two months ago. So I wouldn't want to see an action item under that. Other than that, I would second the motion.
For both focus areas?
Yes. I'm going to motion to Kelly.
So we got a motion and a second. It's a good discussion item as to whether advocacy does or doesn't stay in. In fact, we had a policy around advocacy that the board chose not to embrace and add into our board policy procedures. And yet, this was an area that the community as a whole of stakeholders kind of gave a thumbs up to as one of the pieces. I would turn it over because this was really more of a group effort. I would turn it over to those that are here tonight to speak to how important it is that the board does or doesn't include advocacy in its final strategic plan, to give them the feedback maybe that you're looking for to be able to say this was important or it's not, as the board does other things, if you're interested in that. And board members are here too to speak to it because you're also that conduit, that voice for the community at large, but I would just open that discussion up.
I would say the reason we have put it in there is just understanding like where the board's coming from and making those connections so that the community feels welcome to be able to approach a board member with a concern or comment that they have that's gone on. I don't know if we, as the community, have said any parameters around that. Like, you need to go to the coffee shop every single Monday and advocate for the school board.
Yeah, and I don't think like legislative advocacy was, and I think that's what we're talking about, but that's what we rejected, that as a board, we aren't taking any sort of political stances.
Right.
And I don't think that the community, according to my strategic plan, recollection, talked about sort of the board having a clear political stance in terms of advocacy. It was just more advocates for the board and for the school in terms of the community.
Right. And where that dialogue can go back and forth, the, you know, talking about the programs that are going to be happening. You know, Shreks in the community this weekend. I don't have any kids in the school district. I didn't really pay attention to it until the Chamber news came out on Tuesday. And by that time, I had already made plans for the weekend. Would I have liked to have attended? Yeah, but just some of those things that, maybe you know that the school's offering this and vice versa, the community can come back to the board and kind of build that relationship. I don't, yeah, definitely not any political reasons.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my objection.
The other area I would direct the board's attention to, because we have had some discussions around the video of all meetings of the board where a quorum is present and official business is being conducted. That conversation, and I was not part of that, I was also in between both groups, but my understanding is that stopped just short of board retreats would not be videotaped. That those are opportunities for the board to have a learning session, a growing session together, but that if we had committee meetings or regular meetings with or without action items, that they would be videotaped for transparency purposes. And I know the board hasn't always felt comfortable with that, so I think there's something that we want to tease out there to say, yes, it does or doesn't stay in.
Larry and I talked about this, and there were some of us here, we don't think committee meetings need to be videoed. That's why the last one was not videoed.
They don't, certainly don't need to be. It's up to the board whether or not you videotape them. There's no legal requirement.
And I would say the conversation, and Crystal and other people that were there, around the videotaping was, it was less about the actual videotaping action and more about how do we know where, how do we know what's going on? And we want some sort of assurance that we can go back and actually see what happened, you know, be in the room where it happened, whether that's through a video or recording or something like that, because people do not feel like we're being, that we're being, I would say, almost like we're acting with integrity all the time that we talk about things we shouldn't, or we give certain people certain leverage that we don't give others. So I think that, that was what I heard.
The true discussion that I recall was in the fact that it's the transparency issue. And the second aspect was it moves from a working meeting with the board and other things that are added to the agenda that really the public may be interested in, would like to put input on. And we've seen that occur, and that's the issue.
Yeah. I think it's valid. I mean, I think whenever we don't turn on the video recorder, people think we're being sneaky. I would just assume turning it on.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's because of the board. I don't think that the board acts sneaky. I think there's a whole lot of that that goes into that pocket. I don't think it's just the board.
Well, I don't think the board acts sneaky either. I'm talking about a perception that we could eliminate if we just keep the tape recorder on even during our committee meetings. And I used to be on the side of not recording those things. I've had a change of heart. I actually think it makes sense to record the committee meetings, not to record a retreat. But I think the committee meetings, we're doing a sizable amount of things in these committee meetings.
Because are those committee decisions pushed forward as this should be the decision of the board?
Not really. They still, no matter what happens at a committee meeting, you still have to go to the full board. The full board has to decide. So it's not like a decision is being made in a room and nobody knows, you know, the rationale behind it. It still comes through a meeting that's recorded.
And we're going to be changing the work sessions of how committees are formed. And because we're becoming better board people, that we will need committees.
For sure.
And we need a free discussion.
I think it all really goes back to the transparency and the trust factor of the community knowing that the committee meetings are being constructed the way that you're presenting that they are. Like, I know that you were just saying that you're going to rearrange some things, and I think things that maybe have happened in the past. And granted, I don't know all of those things, but right now, you're building that gap of, you're trying to get that trust bridge built again. And one of those ways that the community had stated was recording those videos. Now, whether or not every community member even watches five minutes of that, it's still a documented document that you can say as a board. Feel free to check out the committee meeting. It's an open, it's an open video for everyone.
Well, I want to put this on record. I think the board's taken a hit for some administration mistakes. And so if we need to be more transparent, okay, let's have it. But I think we're taking, I think we're taking a hit.
The, I'm a supporter of not recording committee meetings for reasons that Kelly has stated. A work meeting, there is a lot of dialogue back and forth with the board in terms that any recommendations are recorded in minutes. And we are bound by law that to record any decisions, any discussion made, and if you want to record it, it should be recorded by somebody in the board now.
Sure, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with anything. I think it's also moving ahead in to the next phase of technology. I mean, I'm a lot more apt to watch a video online than I am to pick up a piece of paper and read it. And that's just me, and that's, and as generation gaps go down further, it's a lot easier to watch a video on your phone or listen to a podcast on your way to work and so forth than it is to open up a 10-page document in 30 minutes. So again, I'm not here saying you have to keep this in there, but I'm just saying as a way to build trust within the community, this was one thing that those community members stated.
Some of the best, some of the best meetings we've ever had are meetings with this room filled with folks just like yourself. And I love it. It's uncomfortable for me to have a room full of citizens, but that's how we, that's how we get things done. And if we video a committee meeting, which everybody's invited to, of course, for me, it would get us people.
It's a time factor.
I know.
Just a few things. First, what she's saying, a time factor, there's also people who just cannot be here or have young kids, that might be just physically unable to be here. The other thing too is I think there's information that's conveyed through video that just cannot be conveyed through text. It's tone, it's nonverbal types of ways that we present ourselves. And so I think that's, that is helpful. And I think in adding to the text that is also shared out, it just cannot be communicated otherwise.
So, you know, how are you going to proceed? I mean, it seems like the board is split on this.
The last, the last thing I did want to just, I guess, toss in there too is, from an educational standpoint, I mean, there's possibly three board members that are coming up for, you know, new elections and things like that, that to get replacements for those, going back and reading meaning minutes, you're going to probably have to meet with someone to get educated where if there was an actual video that they were watching, they can kind of, again, see those emotional displays and kind of educate themselves as they go versus just reading a document. So something that's not... So something that's not even written in here, but from an educational standpoint, that they might not necessarily even want to know what the context of that meeting was about, but just to watch the interactions between board members and committees and how those committee members work, you may get more people like myself that show up to the meetings if all of those pieces are put together.
And I do support videotaping full board meetings and even special full board meetings, committee meetings only, constructed as work meetings, is what I object to.
I think the only struggle with that is at the moment, we don't have committee, I mean, most of the full board comes to those meetings. So it's sort of like an opportunity for us to get together and have a board, full board meeting, although we might not be taking action, that's then not recorded. So I think...
How many were here last Thursday?
Four. Is that the quorum? Seven, the one before that. The community group of about 20 stakeholders put this underneath the focus area of connecting community and board. And this is something that there was a unanimous thumbs up that they were looking for from the school board. You've heard from some of the community members about their position. We've heard from some of the board members about their opposition. Ultimately, we approve a strategic plan that guides the district forward. And so you need to come to some type of agreement about which way it's going to be left in or left out. And I'm not hearing any other questions or concerns, so we'll probably start with a motion.
We already have, we already moved it.
Yeah, we moved.
To approve this.
But it depends, how about it?
Yeah.
Okay. A motion to approve this plan.
In its entirety.
And then if we approve it, then that means we record.
Yes.
The committee meetings.
Or is I being a little...
Right there.
Does I being a little, do we strike international backorder?
That was not explicitly stated, but I think there was agreement around that, so I would suggest a friendly amendment to strike the international backorder. Hearing a yes from Lisa. So that's...
Did you make the motion?
I will, I will. We're called to this, in its entirety.
I don't support this.
If we leave it in, videotape it.
But I think that needs to be said out loud. I mean, what you just said.
Excuse me, do you?
So I just, I mean, well, we can just vote. I mean, I think the voting will...
What Larry and I just said was that we need time to think about that. I understand we have audiences. I understand that on the outside, that you mean, because that's wise. We will take that under advisement. It is not written into policy yet, so it may or may not. That may be one contention that we may have to absorb.
And I don't think the group wanted that one little thing to hold up everything. So I definitely don't want to sit here and continue to advocate for you to record it. I'm just suggesting that that would be one way to build trust, and I bet 10 people would watch your committee meetings. I mean, I don't want you to be insulted by that, but you can physically tell people that, hey, it's recorded, you have free will versus saying what really happened, what didn't happen, he said, she said, it's not recorded. But I don't think the community wants you to hold that up.
And we may need a night to think about this, you know? We may have to absorb this a little bit longer. Is that okay?
I think it is the board's decision, however, as a citizen, I can't come to your meetings or out. This first meeting I've been, Larry's actually been here in three or something. But it is a way for me to come on and see what goes on and get, be informed, and I think that's important.
Especially when there's, just to go on, there's this topic that you want a specific to look at, you can pass forward it to 10 minutes, 80, 40 seconds. So, I mean, you may not be aware that that one citizen or parent or looked at that specific aspect of it.
The transparency factor, I completely agree. I think it's 100% the best thing we can do from a productivity factor for a school board, and you'll get better, you'll get better decisions coming out of this room, I believe, if we could have free dialogue, free conversation, and we're not restricted by, oh, you can't say that because the cameras were on.
That's where I'm...
I think that's what makes the community nervous.
Yeah, that's what makes us a little bit not trustworthy.
But in good ways, in good ways.
And I'm going to say, I don't think it's the board they mistrust, so I think we're taking a hit on that.
The other thing, everybody's forgetting is, committee meetings, we make no decisions.
Correct.
Correct.
Period. And it's like, if we leave this in, I am a no.
But listen, we have, we have committee meetings where we make a recommendation and we have conversations, and then we come to the next board meeting and make a recommendation.
And we hash it over, yeah.
Or we don't hash it over at all, and we make a vote.
When have we never?
There's been a lot of times where people say...
But that's why we're elected. We were elected.
To not record certain meetings and then come and make action without the transparency of the discussion that we had, I don't think that's why we're elected. I'm pretty sure we're elected to represent and advocate for our community. And sometimes that makes us, we need to not just be transparent, we need to be accountable to what we're saying. And the recordings at least hold us accountable. I mean, I think some of that like hesitancy maybe that people are saying is, is okay. We should be able to say that out loud. I think that's where the community is frustrated with us.
Maybe another discussion point is, maybe the committee meetings could be recorded, but not available on the web. If one of you has a concern, come in and order, we could send you the recording and whatever. I would be okay with that.
I'm cautious against that, just because if you think you're sending something privately to somebody and it's not, it will be all over everywhere, so...
Well, you know where I'm going with it.
The thing is, some of them are going to be very boring. I mean, a policy committee meeting?
Yeah.
That will, the 10 people watching it will fall asleep.
Correct.
So I have no problem recording it. People can choose to watch it and then...
Can I take them? I've never heard of a committee meeting. This is the first I've ever heard of it. I've only just started coming to these school board meetings. I've never heard of them. I didn't know people got together in a committee and did committee meetings. How would I know?
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, how would I know? I've viewed a couple of school board meetings online when it's pertaining to something specifically that I needed to see, and I was able to fast forward it. I don't necessarily know about them.
Maybe it's not been clear enough that the public is invited to those, but they certainly, I know Joelle sends out announcements, and it's in the paper.
And I think sometimes it's also the wording of things. Because, I'm sorry, I am a visual person. I don't always honestly understand what I'm actually reading, but hearing you guys speaking and seeing you guys' expressions, I sometimes can interpret things a little bit better about what I'm understanding.
I think there's a key point here that hasn't been brought up, just to bring up, is that sometimes committee meetings are called too late to be posted into the paper, so they don't receive the full, they still get legally publicized as we're required to do, but I think a video might help with that sort of transparency aspect too. Just saying.
I would like, I would like to see us remove this part of it from the strategic plan until the board has an actual discussion and a vote just on videotaping of the meetings. I think there's a lot more to it.
In the policy, through policy.
Through policy. I want to support your strategic plan. I think it's wonderful, and I really, really thank everybody for helping out on that. I think that's important for our community.
We probably ought to have a motion first.
Make a motion on the floor.
Kelly made a motion, so she can amend it.
I amend that we take that part out, and we discuss that and have it through policy. Does that make sense? Luke, help me, might I say that correctly?
It's just something you want to remove that, and then we follow up the conversation. Do you want to put in a policy committee?
Can't we just vote on it now? It's a separate thing, we've discussed the heck out of it.
But what policy number would it come under?
It doesn't necessarily need to be under a policy. It's just more of a procedure. I'm not even sure I would know where to...
Maybe we should vote on that item before we vote on the whole thing.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion. Or just put on hold till we have this other motion?
And then I'll make a motion that we take that, the only, not committee meetings.
I'll say for the...
So wait, I'm sorry, what did I say?
I'm taking that, I'm taking the video out of committee meetings out.
Out of the strategic plan?
Yeah, that line, yes.
I think it may be just clarifying the verbiage there, because it doesn't even say committee meeting in there.
It doesn't, that's why I said that.
So, right, just clarifying that.
So removing the whole bullet point? You have a second, the Jeff's motion.
So that says all meetings of the board?
And like we just talked about, I mean, I'm struck a little bit that we like went through a whole strategic planning process, and now we're like pulling things out just based on a couple of people from the board.
Pulling one item out, Julie. We're going to vote if it goes down by, if it doesn't go up.
This is a longer-term strategic plan, so I'm, what I was about to say was that maybe we give the direction to the administration that we will keep our status quo for what we record right now, and that this can be sort of a longer term, we can figure this out as we get to it, not something that's an urgent part of the community development and engagement strategic plan, is all I was going to say.
This also could be something that each board decides at the main meeting, because your makeup of the board is going to change every year. So each board should not be bound by a decision that a previous board made.
True.
So to Julie's point, the status quo would be just because of what we're doing right now.
Which is that we sort of decide as a board, when the meeting starts, when it's committee meeting, what we're doing. I mean, that's what we've done in the last little bit, and we record the regular meetings.
Record the regular meetings, take a vote on the committee meetings.
That's what we've been doing.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
So we're going to go with my motion to pass strategic plan one and two.
And you can accept that this is a reflection of what you wanted.
We have Jeff's motion, get a second.
Well, you rescinded yours, Kelly, and then Jeff's motion to take committee meetings off the strategic plan.
And I just like the...
Yes.
That's the one that's on the board, isn't it?
The one of Jeff's.
It doesn't say committee meetings.
But it doesn't say committee meetings.
He said committee meetings.
But that's what I said, my motion was just committee meetings.
You want to, you want to insert that into the strategic plan then? We'll just change the verbiage up there. We will, we will video full board meetings, schedule full board, full board meetings.
Your committees might be full board meetings.
Larry, we were just going to leave this in. Once we started, Jeff made that motion.
Very second.
Very second, yeah. But to do, to Lisa's point, if we leave this in, what we can do is what we have been doing, and then when we get a new board, we can make that decision. So what we've done is that we will still respect the strategic planning committee. What, Lisa?
I said, I'm done. I think it wasn't about you.
Okay. So how do we get this?
Do you want to leave your motion, want to vote it out?
Luke, help us with the, with the...
He's rescinding his motion.
So we get a motion, a second on the table.
So the motion is to change the strategic plan to add in the committee, the word committee, so we don't do those, but we keep full board meetings. So it's to change the plan.
That's, I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that, Jeff? Okay. Larry, are you okay with that? A second motion.
Now we're going to vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will vote on that motion. Is there any other discussion?
And the motion is to take the video of committee meetings out of the strategic plan. We're not, we haven't made a motion to approve the strategic plan yet, correct?
Correct. That motion is forthcoming.
Okay.
But just for clarification, I think that the committees is not even in the strategic plan. So I don't think we can remove something that's not in there.
But in the definition of that, it's all meetings where a quorum is present, Joel.
But I think maybe the motion, I don't want to say put words in your mouth, but just change the wording of that whole bullet point.
I think that's what Jeff's motion is.
That's what Jeff's motion is.
That's what that eventually was.
Okay, that's not what it was, so just...
That's Jeff's intent, Joel.
Okay, but I think the verbiage should say that, so when we look back on this, we get clear direction.
Everybody clear?
Can you reread the motion just for clarity? I'm not, I'm not sure I'm clear.
Jeff's motion was to take the video of committee meetings off the strategic plan.
So we will do a roll call, Angie?
Basty?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Gunna?
Yes.
Hey?
No.
Stevenson?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Now a motion to...
Can we reword that then before we approve it?
Yes, sir.
Before we approve it? Since it doesn't say committee meeting, probably reword that bullet point before we approve it.
We will video full board, scheduled full board meetings.
Don't you have special meetings to attend to?
Schedule special. So I think we just went through the different types of committees, and so the regular meetings, yes or no? And you can vote on that, then you can go special, then you can go committee. Obviously, closed session as well, we wouldn't have to vote on...
We're videotaping the regular and special board meetings. No committee meetings are going to be videotaped.
I thought you had said that we were going to vote in a committee meeting as to whether or not we're going to videotape it.
That was my motion.
So then what you're saying though is that we're putting in a policy. I mean, we can't, we don't, that's not even our way that we get a policy approved, that someone just makes a motion. We still have to have a, that sounds like a policy change.
We don't have a policy presently, do we?
All we voted on was to change the wording of the strategic plan. This doesn't create policy. Our next, our next committee meeting, we will still need to decide whether we would video it.
So we're back to the status quo, which is what we have sorts it.
All right, I move that we approve the strategic plan now as amended.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Somebody's opposed?
You're opposed to the strategic plan. The reason given was the amendment.
I oppose the amendment too, but...
Yeah. I mean, a pass by?
Six one?
Yes.
Is it six one or five two? Six one.
Two or six one, Lisa?
I, I will stand by my vote in the...
Six one. Again, thank you, strategic planning members, Zoe, Joe, Crystal, John.
Crystal, John.
Thank you.
Zoe.
Any comments, Zoe, before you say?
Zoe. I think Zoe, she was our student representative.
Grab a cookie, or as a punch.
Might be a good time to just take a short rest.
I'll straighten your door.
I know, it's like, you can't be a lame duck, Patty. Can't be a lame duck. Still got to make decisions, it's a part of the job.
Publicly recognize, Auntie Smith did this on her own. It wasn't part of Taver's annual Christmas. She just felt like it was the holidays, and it was a December meeting, and she put that together for us. She also had some kolaches for some of the clerical administrative staff today. So just kind of a goodwill gesture, so I'll pass along your thank yous. I'm sure it was a nice touch, and appreciated.
You have, back on the agenda, approval of stadium, stadium agreement.
The district desires to install lights at the stadium and continue to pay down some of the note that is part of the infrastructure that has included bleachers and irrigation and so forth. There are multiple people working to see this happen as well with mutual interest and goals. Ted Evans, on behalf of the Mineral Point alumni, continues to run a successful raffle. The Mineral Point Grid Iron Club continues to make efforts and donations toward the stadium. And there is a stadium committee that is led and chaired by Kristin Mitchell, that continues to work on behalf of some of the other fundraising efforts that are going on. This particular item is before the board takes the existing note that is out in the, in the school district's umbrella, underneath our umbrella, of one hundred fifty-one thousand and refinances that amount to two hundred forty-one thousand. And what that does is allows the pay down of the initial note as well as then the ability, along with some other in-kind gifts, to purchase lights and do an installation in preparation for the ability to play night games or contests in the evening as early as spring of 2018.
Can this be put on Act thirty-two, their LED energy saving, new installation? Is there any way that can be charged to that, or is it?
It cannot, because it's new construction, it's not showing energy efficiency for existing construction. So if we had the old stadium and replacing those lights with LEDs, then that could fall under Act thirty-two. But because we're constructing new lights, you're not replacing bad energy with better energy efficiency.
Great.
Yeah, you're welcome.
What if you move the old lights up here?
Yeah, it would be.
And then replace them.
Or if you just play a, play a game with some flashlights, then that would replace them.
Oh, I got, I got a motion to, motion by Jeff to approve, do you have a second?
I'll second.
What's that, by Larry Dolphin?
Uh, question, question.
Sure.
Should the school be a party to this agreement in the memorandum of agreement that does not list the school district as, as a party?
Yeah, the school district is actually the, the person, or the group, or the entity that will take on the actual note that authorizes the borrowing, and again, not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand. They will provide the necessary documents to the bank to, to go forward with this promissory note. So the actual note is between the school and the bank. The Gridiron Club, the alumni, the stadium committee, and its representatives, none are a five oh one C three entity and would not be able to command a loan, nor would they be able to have the favorable interest rates that the school can receive because it's a governmental agency. So from that perspective, the, the agreement is simply to put some guarantees in place that the payments will be made by entities outside of the school district, so that the school district would not be obligated to, to make a payment.
How did, how, if there was not a payment made, how would the school district enforce the agreement if they're not part of the agreement?
I believe the MPSD is, is listed, if I'm not mistaken, in the agreement itself as, as a person that is part of this process. The, we have a signature on it by the school board president that would state that the minimum payments would be made, and if not, there are guarantees out there to cover any shortfall. And I think that would be, this has had legal review, would be an enforceable document.
The first paragraph, as you say, says who the agreement is between and it does not list the school district. It also states that the Gridiron and the MP alumni are five oh one C have that status, which I think you just.
It says without.
Oh, without.
Do you want to hear the original, or the?
Oh, okay, gotcha. No, not the original, but.
Okay.
She's on page fifty-two.
Have the Paulskills signed their agreement yet?
They have. We have a signature by Ted Evans, Mike Thousand, and Ted and Mary Paulskill. All three of those have pre-signed a document in good faith to show that they are committed to this agreement if the board should accept.
So we approve this, or approve everything?
I would do it in, in, just because the resolution itself is a pretty formal process, that I would make a motion, if I were to suggest, make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing bond not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand. And then I would come back and make a motion to approve the stadium agreement.
Don't you think we should approve that first?
Either way, that's fine. Yeah, this one does not have to have a specific order, because it's not securing a performance contractor.
Okay, so you would like to see, and, like.
Can I make a comment? Go ahead.
I just wanna say, we, we set the original note to bank back in two thousand fourteen and so far, between the alumni and the Gridiron Club, have paid over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and paid that loan down well ahead of time. I think you've got a very reputable, engaged community raising funds.
Does this look?
I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm just, to be clear, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this, because I didn't vote in favor of the first in the head of the school district take out this law. But, I am impressed with the, the way that the Gridiron heads maybe's payments over the years. It was a whole different situation at this point in line of that, but still, I'll be voting against it.
Any other questions?
How much have they paid off?
Well, it's turned to two fifty, it's down to one fifty-one, I don't have all my notes here, I guess, sizable, that's just the principal, Larry. They paid the interest, about a hundred twenty thousand, I think I put that in the letter, if you have it. It's on the second page, right there. And in fact, they just made a payment that what wasn't due until April.
Do you have a question?
Can I say, call a question? You got a, you got a motion.
Very, the question is involved. To approve the, the loan, Jeff, is what the motion was? The resolution?
I was, I assumed we were doing it all, but it can be the loan.
Okay.
The loan first?
The loan first. So the resolution authorized the borrowing, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And what's the second, what's the second paragraph? Get, get me to speed on this.
The agreement between the school, alumni, and the Paulskills. Page forty-one.
Okay. I do think you should add the school district in as a party at the beginning.
It does have it in the recital, that we are the owner of the stadium.
Yeah, I see that.
But if you would like us to put it in the memorandum of agreement, we certainly can do that, so duly noted, not a problem.
So the motion is to approve the resolution.
Yeah. To borrow two hundred fifty thousand.
Not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay. Basting.
Yes.
Bush.
I'm staying.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunna.
Yes.
Hey.
No.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Stephes.
Yes. Second motion, dealing with this, do you approve the agreement? Memorandum of agreement? With the noted change of adding the school district to the first paragraph?
Make the motion.
Question by Jeff, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Larry, second by Larry Dolphin? Any other discussion? Roll call in.
Basting.
Yes.
Bush.
I'm staying.
Dolphin.
Yes.
Gunna.
Yes.
Hey.
No.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Stephes.
Yes.
Alright, moving on.
Yeah, are we the board? Uh, not yet. Through the elementary capacity.
Oh.
As of Thursday, when the board packet is published, for your review, the deadline for signing up and registering is not yet concluded, and so there were some additional members from the board packet that it's expressed in interest.
I added a couple more since Thursday, yeah.
So there, this is the final, yeah, thank you, you're, have a great night. Bye-bye. This is the final list of people that approached the school district with an interest in serving on an elementary committee to study capacity, possibly accessibility, depending on the board's direction tonight. This ad hoc committee is a committee that basically is bringing back a recommendation and the board should approve this committee if they see this group as appropriate. And by doing so, this then becomes a, a committee that is actually an extension of the board and their meetings then would need to be duly posted and would be part of the open meetings, law and records. So this is a formal process to approve the ad hoc committee structure. Once the committee is approved, then the board has a further opportunity to define the scope of this committee. Ask them to, to look at or not look at certain things, so you can kind of give them some direction about where their roles and responsibilities start and stop. I see this, this committee as advisory, a committee that will deliberate and bring back a recommendation to the board. It's the board's final authority to approve or deny that recommendation with final capacity at the elementary. So any questions for the board about their charge?
Yes.
Their work?
Yes. We have two teachers on here, and we already had a survey from teachers, so they've had their input. Why would we give them another input?
That's a question for the board. We did not filter the list. I had shared with the board that we would accept up to about twenty names, after that, the committee might get a little bit too large, and if we got larger than twenty, we would try to diversify the stakeholder groups so that we had multiple viewpoints represented. We didn't hit that threshold of twenty, and so we didn't run a lottery or other. It's fully within the board's review to remove.
I think, I think. I think there's a real benefit of having teachers on the committee. I mean, I think they can, you know, they, they know how the building works better than the parents that are on here, so I, I think it would be, I think it would really benefit the committee to have a couple of teachers.
But then, I think that Matt should choose them.
Rather than them volunteering?
Yeah. That's just, that's just what I think. I think he could have his, his, you know.
I, I don't, I mean, what difference does it make? I mean, you've got teachers that have, you know, an interest in this, why not just let those teachers be on it?
I would be comfortable with any of my staff on it.
Yeah.
You will facilitate this committee?
I certainly, I would facilitate if you want. How you want it to be led, but it's likely to be handled. It actually would be chaired by one of the committee members and they would be reporting back to the board periodically throughout the next months with the final report determined to be projected in May. But yes, Matt and I would co-facilitate the actual meetings themselves, but they'd be chaired by a committee member that would actually be guiding the, the group's decision-making process.
At what point does the board provide input as to the parameters of what they're doing?
This would be a good time to do that.
Right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we don't have that.
After we approve it.
We have to approve it, but we should have the, the, look at the survey that the teachers looked at so we have some guidance on what we think that they could look for. I mean, the teachers did that input, so let's use what they, let's use the survey that's out there, instead of just.
Yeah, but we would.
We're not bringing it.
We would provide to the committee all of the resources, information, data that has been collected to date from multiple sources so that they can become fully informed and engaged with the issue at hand. We would look at enrollment trends, past, and potentially going forward. We would take a look at the surveys that have been given, any of the studies that have been conducted by third-party vendors and share all that information. We would most likely do a site visit and walk through the building both when it's full as well as when it's potentially empty, to look at all the different spaces and see how it's utilized. Potentially a site visit to a newer school that has recently been constructed to compare and contrast how schools are being built as of today. And then start to dig into some of the bigger questions about what the reports and the findings that we commissioned with FEH would share about our elementary building, and then learn from them. Along with, I would see a, a piece of this that would have a community, a community feedback opportunity because that committee will ultimately need some guidance from the community at large. These meetings are open to the public. School board members are welcome to attend, but are not part of the actual committee. But you could certainly, I would actually recommend a subset of the board potentially viewing at certain intervals the conversations. They will be reporting back to the board, so you'll get the questions that the committee has for the board and get clarification from the board, and the board may decide to further limit scope or give guidance to the committee at certain steps along the way.
So, I think we should approve this committee, but as a board, we come back with how we would like them or what we'd like them to examine, or at least, because I don't think we can wing this tonight. I don't think winging this without, you know, fair terms some stuff.
I came up with some questions, and I shared them with Luke, and he thought that it would be better for this committee to have a broader to look at things, you know, maybe not in answering the questions that I had posed to this ad hoc committee. But, you did say that you thought the board should provide some parameters. To me, I mean, you know, we, questions that come up are, is it, is moving a grade to the high school a solution, and would that work? You know, is there even room up here? I mean, that's a question that should be answered. If there's gonna be. We've seen a proposal in the past for building a new elementary school, and that was to the tune of twenty million dollars. I personally, it was nineteen ninety, I have to remember. Anyway, I'm personally opposed to that, I don't know how the rest of them feel. But I think abandoning that elementary school is not something I would be in favor of. We've put, we just put a roof on it.
I don't, I don't know that we wanna limit.
No, we shouldn't, we shouldn't limit that, we shouldn't put that out of this goal.
Well, I, I think we could at least say, if you're going to propose building a new elementary school, it should be because it's absolutely necessary.
Well, maybe they will find that out when they examine everything.
Another thing I would propose is that they come back to us with their final recommendation in April, not May. You've got three new board members in May, that's for sure.
Yeah, there's definitely two, that's a great point, there's two ways to think about that. The first is that you have the historical knowledge and institutional wisdom of, of being on the board for three years to be able to make that decision in April. The other piece is that whatever decision is made, the new board in May will have to execute that out, whether it be a grade reconfiguration, or a build-out, or others. I would suggest that those that express an, an interest to be a board candidate be moved in and brought along in the entire process. As we laid out the timeline with FEH, it's, it's a pretty rigorous timeline to get it done in May. We'll share that timeline with you once the board, the board approves the committee and we meet and agree upon some dates. But there is some definite turnaround time periods between meetings where there just needs to be some work done. And it would be tight to do the meeting in April, the second Monday, even into the third and fourth, because we do have that spring break in there in March. We just laid it out as prior to this meeting, so it's not an attempt to subvert, or, or try to move this around this border to the next board. But I would, I'd be open to, if this is, this is the part the board defines and gives us some direction.
What I think is, just like the safety committee and their report back to us, they had, they identified some, some projects that, that could have been done the very next day. Short-term timeline, maybe they identify a, a solution to an overcrowded room that they could move, just do something within the building walls. And move in, move in a grid out possibly, I would call that short-term, longer-term, ten, twenty years? Identifying the needs for a, a new elementary school, I'm just throwing that out there.
Or an addition.
Or an addition, absolutely, or a remodel, or upgrade of the old one, I, I don't know.
I think you're suggesting their parameters. What, you're telling them what to look for and what to do. I mean, you've given them.
Are you saying aye?
No, put it, it, I don't know, I kinda know what it sounded like.
I'm saying, I, I think that's what I understood Luke to say, that the board is, is able to do. That we can say, you know, tell us how to address this issue, short of building a new elementary school. We can say that. That's within our, I mean, I would hate for them to go down that road and be all in, and we're against it.
I think if, if our charge is to have an on-board committee with no board members on it, if that's where the fifteen of them are at, and they come back to us with good reason for being in that, that place, or they, the community certainly has part of their research and support is there, I would, I would hate to limit that.
Well, but here's the...
I don't, I don't think that's...
We're the only ones looking at the numbers. You know, they could come back and say, build the Taj Mahal. They're not, you know, we haven't set, we haven't set, we haven't set a budget. They're not looking at numbers. I mean, unless we tell them numbers, we can tell them.
I agree with Lisa. I don't think there's anything wrong with saying exactly what she said, and yet I agree with Andy that it's like, if they decide to override and say, well, we don't think you guys got the pulse of the community, we really do want to look at a new elementary that bring us the information that you found that justifies that. But I'm with Lisa. At this point, there's no way I would ever vote to spend $20 million for a new elementary.
And we...
But I will also say that if the community comes back and says they want a new elementary, then it's out of my hands.
But if the, so my, my only hesitation with, I feel like if we, if we give them the parameters upfront, like do whatever you just said, like everything short of a new school, and then they come back and say, nope, it's a new school, they've actually done exactly what we told them not to do. So, I mean, so I feel like if we give them the parameter of like, the benefit of that we're all invested in this community to be wise with our research, I mean, I don't think that people are getting on this like, you know, to, to build a new school or the Taj Mahal they're doing, they want to understand what the needs are of our community. And if we give them the explanation upfront that we're a real school with a tricky financial, you know, outlook, so here are things we've got, we've got to keep in mind, but we need you to really do your due diligence to help us understand where the community is at and what the needs of our students are, and that's when, I mean, the hard work should be on us then, when they come back with the, or, well, it won't be on me, it won't be on you. But it should be on the board then to say, okay, so we, we committed to this committee to come and give us input, now we have to trust it, and we have to be able to ask enough questions and give enough direction to then follow through with a plan.
I agree in that...
That's my hesitation of that.
This process should not in May surprise the board, right? And in April, as they bring back some of the preliminary recommendations, you're giving them further direction, and it could be that there's multiple recommendations that could be feasible, and they have prioritized them, but ultimately, it's the board's authority to decide and determine if there's a budgetary piece to this, if they go forward or not. That's, that's not a committee's decision.
Right.
That's a board's decision, and if there is such a thing as an addition or a school, that's certainly a board decision, but you would want their recommendation or input before you would give that careful consideration. So, I think recognizing that the board has a very important role and responsibility in this that stops with the committee's just ability to give a recommendation input after studying this in depth.
Just remember co-facilitating the district safety committee. I remember coming back prior to our final presentation to give you an update, and that'd be another opportunity to give us guidance on, are we on the right track here, are we not? So, I, if I were leading that, or co-leading that, I'm sure we would do that.
So, would we get some sort of opportunity before April to, or May to say we're not on the right track?
I like the wording that's up there, which recommends monthly progress, whether it's with final, in May or April.
Yeah, April would be a strong preference, at least by me.
Yeah, we will do everything we can as we, as we laid out the timeline is.
I mean, you've already been on the board for three years, it's like, you know, it's going on.
What I anticipate happening is that the chair along with the co-facilitators would come back and give a board report monthly, and you would also then receive some of the same information that the committee has had a chance to review and look through. Part of that will be some of the FEH reporting that we've commissioned them to do around accessibility and capacity more, so they will be...
Will you write in there that they will get all the reports that they need?
That will be a given. I wouldn't want to withhold information from a committee that's making a recommendation report, so everything that we have available to us will be given to them.
Is there an, sorry, is there an opportunity, and maybe I just haven't read this exactly right, but I think I, we're, I know we're giving them a recommendation, but I, I look at this list, and these are smart, smart people. I would love for them to be able to not just hear a recommendation or get, but like, to ask us questions, to drill down, because I think, in my experience, we sort of like, oh, yeah, that's a really good idea, go, and we haven't asked, we haven't drilled down enough to really get to what we're looking for, what you were saying, or what next is, like, I mean, I think there's 100 examples of how we think we're on the right track, and then we get blindsided because we just didn't get deep enough. So, I would, I hope that these guys will come with questions of us to help them really get a clear indication of what the recommendation that we are all coming with, as a board are coming from.
Should they meet with us before, should they meet and then have questions and then come and drill us, and then we send them back out?
Maybe they could invite us to a meeting or something?
I was just gonna say something similar in that this committee just needs to start to get off the ground, meet each other, start to become inform, you have a wealth of information. You've seen surveys they haven't seen, you know capacity and enrollment trends that they haven't seen. They need to get their feet wet first, and then at some point, I will encourage every committee meeting to end with, what questions do you have for the board, so that the chair brings it back, because he's asking some back questions or direction to the committee. But I do think that at some point strategically, it would make sense to have a joint committee and board meeting where we all meet together and have a joint conversation. I don't know if that process needs to happen all the time, but I think at certain places it would make sense for us to crisscross just to make sure that they're within the boundaries that you feel are, you're comfortable with, before setting them too far down a rabbit hole that isn't going to work out for them.
Are they gonna videotape their meetings?
I can't remember what the policy is. So, this would be a committee.
Well, let me go back. I think there's no policy.
Yeah, so to that point, it would benefit...
I think they'd be a special one then.
One question I got, what's that allows the committee to take some official action?
You could direct them to take action on behalf of the board.
Well, we're not, we're not, they're ad hoc.
Yeah, that's just part of the policy.
Yeah, and that's part of the policy that we'll, we'll go through after this.
So, Jeff made a motion to approve the list of names.
I'll second.
Could another person get on? If someone else comes and says, you know, I just actually heard about this, and I've got an interest, we could...
Well, we have to have a deadline.
Twenty people.
I, I am open to it, because I want to be more inclusive, but at some point, when you're backing up to inform others after the process is kind of unfolded, I would say by our second meeting, if they haven't elected into the committee, then we just need to move forward with the group that we have. If you're comfortable with it, that's a good point.
It might get more publicity now, and there might be more people showing interest, so maybe by, can we just set a date, Jim?
By the second meeting.
Well, in our...
That's our choice.
No, I don't think the second meeting is...
If we don't, we would have to approve anybody after tonight anyway. So, if we feel like after one meeting or two meetings, then we just pull it off.
December 21st is our first tentative.
Because we have to approve or not approve.
Okay, after, yeah, December 21st. No more after December 21st.
So, would you openly approve anyone and everyone else through the 20, or do you need to see the list and reconfirm this?
I think I want to see it.
Then I think I would recommend to just go with the group you have that has solicited by the deadline, and this is our group going forward. There will be opportunities for the committee to weigh in on this process, so this, there'll be a two-day exercise roughly in the month of, third week of March is what it's tentatively scheduled for, where people can come in and feed back into this process.
Well, you know, what if, if other people are interested, they could go to that committee, and if the committee comes to us and says, we have these people, we want them on the committee.
Bring it, bring it to us in January.
Yeah, but I mean, if they jump in midterm, if they jump in midstream...
I just feel like I'm seeing an engineer, I mean, maybe I don't know all these people, but like, if there's someone that hasn't heard of him, it's like, okay, I'm supposed to be, maybe for that.
So, a motion by Jeff to approve the list of names that we have already. Second to Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? More motion here, thank you. Board policies.
I think we need to finalize the word, try to the committee, right?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to give the committee a charge, bring back recommendations. I think the one thing that, is it capacity and accessibility or just capacity? I see these two intertwined, the capacity studies already being engaged by FEH, yeah.
Let's let them meet for one month, and then let's define how, we'll have, they'll have a field for...
They need to know that's good.
They need to have a charge from us when it doesn't add up.
I think they go together, I mean, accessibility and capacity, and I think it would be silly to have them just look at capacity and ignore accessibility. So, I think having them look at both makes sense. I, I mean, your recommendations, the three sentences that are italicized, those look...
I have a lot of them, and then a notice that the committee...
Notice that the committee...
So, that's...
Those four, I think, are...
Need to be in there.
Yeah.
But we want accessibility.
So, go ahead and use the italicize as that charge?
Yeah, one, accessibility.
Pretty good.
Okay.
I think you need to make a motion again.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
I'm good with it.
Do you vote on it?
I don't. Does anybody want to vote on the charges on the committee?
Sorry, it's an item for action, or what, whatever.
Yeah, approval of the committee.
Yeah, cool.
And the committee is for capacity and accessibility. All right, so then we're into our second board policies. The first is policy 185, board operations.
Add a note, your blue books in front of you contain policies that Luke very much worked very hard to get done.
It's a team effort. 100 should be cleaned up and combed less than the ones that are ready for approval tonight in the 100 series. The 2 through 700 series are mostly updated, but we have, I just was looking through a 2014 board packet where we had approved the 100 series, but there's also a 300 in there. So, we'll come back, and now that we have binder back in your possession, we'll pull out those old 300s and put in the new 300s as we know that we've come across them.
More importantly, where's the website?
Electronic version will follow. So, now that we know what we have for 100s, and we've got them all cleaned up in a nice format in a Word document, it will be much easier for us to upload those. So, you'll see the 100 series.
And some are hidden, you know, the names you...
Yeah, it no longer will be, they'll all have a title in the actual document in itself as well as a table of contents that will help, so you'll see that for the 100s before the next board meeting, for sure.
All right, should we start with policy 185? This is the thing that sets up last meeting twice a month. I'm feeling the question, I'm not in favor of this. Seriously.
You're not gonna be on much longer.
I know, but I'm just saying, I thought that our last meeting, that, that in-between meeting that we had, I didn't care for it. It went on for too long. I mean, it's not saving anybody time. I think two giant meetings, they go until 10 o'clock.
But if the people who are on these, if the people who are on these committees, the education, human resource, and physical world management, if they do their work prior, then we should be able to be okay with this.
Anyway, we've already met on this. I mean, we're discussing, I, I mean, I just think we should know.
See, you can call committee meetings, but I, I, I'm not in favor of this policy either. I don't want to be told that I'm going to have two meetings every month, no matter what.
We could still meet, we have other meetings, but not every single month have two meetings. We could meet every day till 10 o'clock.
So, I have a question. So, are these how the new, are these, how the new committees will work under Luke? We had, I asked that before, right? Am I, am I, am I confusing it with something else?
You had talked about renaming some of these.
Yes, but I meant, I meant, will this be new phase?
Depends on what...
Education, human resources?
I believe they would replace our existing...
That's what it is, yes.
Theoretically, yeah, but I mean, it's, you could see where they're in, shorter.
Well, let's, 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 then we table this till we get a, till we just have a new board anyway, because we, we wouldn't stop in midstream and put new committees together. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to move to table it till May, that's fine with me. I, I move it, policy 185, we table till May.
Put a motion in a second.
Only discussion I might look, I just look back at in 2017, and the only month that we did not have two meetings was the month of February. In some cases, it was multiple. Most were regular, special meetings, occasional committee meetings. So, just to, you know, our practice...
I'm not trying to be mean, but I think that you as the head need to get more of our ducks in a row so that we do it in one meeting, because I, frankly, I don't think we should be meeting twice a month. Not as a whole, not as a whole board.
I think that's... You know, I, I had a conversation with Luke, and he was on board with this, but I would like to see the board better utilize technology so that in advance of a meeting, we watch a presentation or something like that insurance guy that was here at the last meeting. I would have watched a video on that before the meeting. There are other things it seems like we could do in advance that could be on the agenda, and the public can see them too, so that these meetings don't go so fast. I, I would rather see a policy that says something about embracing technology to shorten meetings, rather than let's have another full-blown meeting two weeks after we just had a big long meeting. You know, and this policy, the way it's written, says you're going to have these three items. I mean, those meetings will go on. Well, Lisa, you're the policy chair. Do you want to put something like, for technology? I mean, I don't know that we definitely need a policy in it. I think Luke, you know, is willing to embrace it. I don't know that it needs to be a policy, so.
So, there's a motion on the floor to table policy 185 until May.
Okay.
Is there, was there a second?
Julie, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
I oppose, just because we're tabling all the time.
That's a big one, this is a big one.
Jeff.
186, ad hoc committees. It's essentially what we just operated under. I use that framework in the absence of having an ad hoc committee policy. If it worked well for you in this most recent situation, then I'd recommend approval. If you see something...
I'm going to approve it.
Second, motion in a second. Any other discussion on that? Second was by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. 200 series.
200 series.
Are these new?
The 220.
No, these are the second type, the second one.
Um, what do you mean by new? This is second name, that's what I got.
Okay.
221 increment, hiring the district administrator, I don't need to read them all, you can either do a consent approval or pull them out.
The only ones I have a question about, or that I would suggest a change to, are the two on evaluation, the, the 225 policies.
Okay.
There's a big long paragraph at the beginning about the frequency. I think it'd be just separate to go every year, and I personally would like to see them be everywhere, both for all administrators.
That's the same change I was going to suggest.
There's once a year?
Yeah, it says, it says once every three years or before contractors, and there's no stuff that really works out to sort of like once a year, so let's just make it clear and simple, once a year.
I like that, too.
It goes to your accountability quote, too.
So, um...
So, maybe a consent approval for 221, 221, 221 rule on 222.
Right, and I think...
And then we'll amend 225 and bring it back next month. 220, the two 225s.
Yes, yes, because I think there's a whole other thing in there that we need to add to administrator evaluation.
And what's that?
I don't know, I've got it right here.
Okay.
So, consent on 221 through 222, you have a motion.
I'll move.
Motion, Lisa, do a second.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion here. We will bring back 225s with the proposed changes next month.
And 225-1.
And 225-1. Now, 500 series.
The 533 revised. I...
Five thirty-three, I left revisions in, um, so that you can see where those changes were made. It's essentially the same policy, but this policy then does, uh, it says approximately five candidates instead of exactly five candidates. It removes the, uh, use of parents, whatever feasible language, and, um, it does remain staff involvement as advisory, any discussion must be kept confidential. So, essentially, uh, in a nutshell, this removes parents from, uh, being a participant on a selection committee for a teacher. Current policy or procedure still permits parents to serve on search committees for support staff, for principals and directors, and for, uh, superintendents, just not teachers.
I have a problem with even going through with this policy because I think we have another situation that, um, we're not addressing on a new hire. And that's special education, and that, uh, I don't think was transparent enough. It wasn't transparent because of some decision-making that Luke was able to do without. I wasn't aware of anything, but I would like to get all hiring things, all hiring questions, question answered. And if we need to go into a closed discussion on this, that's what I would like to do. I, I don't even want to touch this until we go into a closed session and talk about the special education hire. I think that has been a major concern and, um, needs to be addressed for the parents and the students.
And you're referring to policy, policy five thirty-three?
Yep. I don't want to touch that until we get this other special education hire. I think we have a lot of unhappy parents.
But we talked about something that's on the agenda.
I'm asking to go into closed session before closed session comes up and before we vote on this.
We have closed session on the agenda, do you, do you want to make a motion and move policy five hundred to the end of the agenda? We can do that.
Number, yes, that and employee services until after closed session.
Just to understand, um, there's some sub-paragraphs A through F that we would need to go to closed session for, so the purpose of this is for.
We didn't discuss this policy in closed session, you're suggesting that we table this.
Table it until after closed session, yes.
So, we go back into open session after the closed session and then we talk about policy five thirty-three?
Five thirty-three.
Yeah, I'm just seeking clarity on, on what state statute, um, sub-paragraph allows us to go in a closed session.
She wants, you want to talk about a particular?
I want to talk about a particular hire.
Is it, is it, is it what's already on the agenda though? And that's my question.
We weren't able to approve of the hire because page fifty-seven of the employee handbook. And so, I think we had a parent here that was concerned about, we have had letters from parents, no one's addressing this issue about the hire.
I'm not sure.
About the special education.
Is it, is it the one here that's on the agenda? Do you see under employee services, there's a, is, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, it would, it would, it would do with that. It would be, it would, this would, this is a byproduct of a hire. This is.
So, the approval of the instructional system is the reason why we go into closed session, Kelly?
Yes, but it's, she, she, we get to approve this, we didn't get to approve the special education person. We were told that's who's being hired.
Can we go into closed session under, the item listed under employee services?
You can go under to, uh, discuss, um, candidates, the evaluation of candidates for a position.
All right, so we are not going to closed session because of policy five thirty-three, we're just moving that to the end of the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to, to do that, Kelly, move that to the end of the agenda?
Do we need to make a motion to move it?
Is it okay with board? Anybody object?
It's going to be a little complex to go into closed session.
To go into closed session, not to move policy, okay.
All right. So, let's move back to the end of the agenda and then we will move on then, items for information and discussion.
Um, going back to. Items for information and discussion. Uh, the school safety, uh, report was asked for, um, for a further review and brought back to the next board meeting and our previous board meeting. Did convene the school safety committee, um, Matt was the, the co, the chair of that committee, facilitated it. They did make some recommendations for some procedures and protocols that would be implemented. Additionally, we had a report from our insurance company, that's EMC, maybe some security recommendations for the district as well. Were able to compile for the board, this is Matt's report at the elementary school. Uh, do you want to take this, Matt, and just kind of work it through? Or is that, is that what the board was asking for?
I, I thought the chart was great, I mean, I.
Thought that's what you were asking for?
Yeah, very helpful.
Yeah, we just, the one, two, five, the top five recommendations from, I think, June. So, I just looked at those slides, those reports and just, um, highlighted where we're at. So, every, every, uh, every of the five components is somewhere in progress. The one we've reached the most progress, I say we're not completed, we're ongoing, is number four. Um, and those are the things that we could do quite quickly. So, number four, uh, improve staff security and safety training.
Seems good, I, there's another chart here though, I'll put, Kelly's out.
So, this is. This is Matt's report at the elementary, based on the safety committee.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, okay. But then there's this.
And the other is.
I think it's that one.
It is. This is the, uh, based on the EMC report, which has a district-wide high school, middle school, elementary component. Some of the pieces that were picked up by Matt in his safety committee was what was reported out on the sub-level of the elementary. So, that's basically a report out of the measures that were implemented based on the safety committee's study and recommendations. This is the, uh, ongoing list of all EMC recommendations in their full report. So, you'll see, um, different levels, I think almost everything that doesn't cost or have a funding item associated with is either being investigated, progress or completed. Many of these items have funding, uh, that is needing to be attached to it. And it would be challenging for us to implement some, if all of these, without a significant funding source.
So, how do we attach a funding, uh, uh, funding source to this so we know how to prioritize?
We could commission somebody to, to maybe do some pricing, I mean, this would be a pretty exhaustive list to get quotes, uh, from multiple vendors. You're talking about not just the hardware, but the implementation.
So, could part of this be given to the, um.
Building to grounds, maybe?
No. The ad hoc committee?
I don't know, that seems like too much to give.
All right. All right. So.
I'm a little frustrated to think that we can't get a number on the doors at the elementary for Christ's sake, it's like they can't cost a lot of money. It's like, can't we buy a, a stupid wood number, one, two, three, and slap them up there?
Stencil it?
It's like, I mean, to me, it seems like there's a lot of these things that really are, it's not going to cost much and we've literally done nothing.
What's a surveillance sign?
Uh, it's attached back to the ports, report, so if you go to the EMC report and you look at the number under the observation, it gives you the description that it's matched to. So, what number are you looking at?
Twenty.
And is that under which district?
District five.
So, we go to, um, the Chrysler, I'm sorry, the security report two thousand and seventeen.
Page ninety-two.
Page ninety-two in your book.
It's the first line.
I mean, do you think there's still some low-hanging fruit on this list?
Sure, yeah.
Does it make sense maybe for, um, do we, we have a buildings and grounds committee?
We have operations. This is part of operations.
I mean, maybe there could be some committee meeting to go through this list, find out the things that can be easily accomplished and, uh.
No, and that's fine, uh, we just haven't prioritized the sign that says we have video surveillance in our building. It just, you know, I know it's a recommendation and a lot of these are just nickel and. So, some of them I agree are more important than others and some are going to cost a lot more than others. We can order this sign today if that's the board's desire, I just haven't prioritized this sign as important.
But door locks seems important.
That's where I would rather spend my focus, is trying to figure out how to do some of these, so.
Right.
What you have on tonight's agenda is approval of the secured entrance at the elementary. That's been a significant project, to solicit a vendor, uh, put together the, the door hardware and the, the construction piece, but then you also have a surveillance piece with cameras.
So, this, this whole safety thing wasn't attached to a committee so they could be followed through?
Uh, it was attached to Matt's safety committee and they did make recommendations.
No, I need to a board committee.
No, there, well, it's, it's always underneath buildings and grounds or operations, but, uh, the chair is not called a meeting, um, because we, we worked with it as a board. Uh, the board was delivered as a committee, they acted upon it as a, as a committee, as a board of a whole. And we're always, it's again, I was on last week's, or last one's agenda, it's on this one, so if there's anything that the board would like to see or send it to committee, all of those options are in front of you.
Well, what I, we, we could send it to building grounds committee, but go through, figure out the inexpensive projects here. And just get the, just get the process going, I guess, is what I would do. If we want to do many.
Well, I'm not sure if we do this though.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's other priorities in our district than putting a surveillance video sign up.
The numbers on the doors though, we were talking about.
Yeah, that's still.
It's like a box.
I would spend money on locks before I spend money on signs, so this is where the board really needs to give us some direction. If you want us to knock off all the low-hanging fruit that's underneath a hundred dollars and just make it happen, it will compete against other priorities that would be, because ten times a hundred is a thousand.
See, I don't know that you want to do all of them, it's all going to add up. Maybe the buildings and grounds committee should need this and give better direction. Who's building and grounds?
Operations, they're saying building and grounds, it's operations.
I made a motion to send it to operations.
I'll second you.
So, you have a motion by Jeff, I'm saying by Lisa, send it to operations.
Here's a list of committee members.
I think, uh, Kelly is.
Kelly, you're the chair of operations. I'm right here, boss.
Is there, uh, there's been a motion in a sec, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
State report cards, uh, if you're looking in your packet, page one seventeen. And, um, give out a, a quick overview. And I think what's helpful, um, to understand with these state report cards is just on the very basic level, obviously each building is parsed out, uh, with its own subgroup of students. With its own tests even, which are different by, by sub-level. And only at the district level do they combine all buildings as though it were one school. So, when you see the district score, you're thinking of it as one school building, grades K four through twelve, it's looking at seven hundred and thirteen kids. Um, right now, we're not a very mobile district, only one percent of our students are transient in population. Ninety-nine percent of our students are white, twenty-four percent economically disadvantaged, and ten percent are students with disabilities. As we look at the different areas of achievement, you have a district score as compared to a state score, that's the average score across the state. Uh, you can also look at growth, uh, with regards to students of, um, with, uh, language is a second, ES, or ELA, English Language Learners. I'm sorry, the ELA is English Language Arts, down below is, is where we get into the ELA achievement gaps. So, English language and math are the two areas where your academic look at performance. This would be across all of the subsets, so there'd be the forward exam, the ACT aspire, it would be the, um, the ACT, it'd be the dynamic learning maps, which is the, uh, test that's given to our students that have, um, special education needs, and then the access, uh, which is for our English Language Learner population. So, those five tests, there might be some others, did I miss any?
No, aspire.
No aspire.
Aspire hasn't been given enough for that to feel like that's an accurate data yet.
Thank you for the correction.
But it's forward, uh, dynamic learning maps, and ACT.
When we look at specifically the data around closing achievement gaps for specifically art, uh, English Language Arts and mathematics, so language, English and language, you notice that the state is closing the gaps at a rate of about seventeen out of twenty-five, uh, we're closing at forty-three out of fifty. That's a pretty significant shift, and we can see that break down a little bit better by group because it does tease out differently at the elementary than the middle than the high. So, that's one indicator that our students, uh, that would traditionally be recognized as an achievement gap area, uh, are performing well ahead of the state when it, uh, looks at the closing gaps. On track for post-secondary readiness, looks at things like graduation rates, attendance rates, our third grade language arts, our eighth grade math scores. And again, we're exceeding the, the state average in every one of those areas. Uh, we have no deductions on absenteeism and/or dropout rates. And then, really, the, the key that I want to focus in on just a little bit is the second page. And it really helps to explain some of the different areas of, of scoring. And the more that you can understand these areas, the better it will help, uh, to know at, at the individual school level what's happening. So, first of all, the, the student achievement, um, I would just highlight that it's a composite score of your language arts and mathematics, and it's looking at, uh, this as a subgroup of all students that are tested. So, when you look at that, the, the next sub-score underneath that is the district growth. And that is a score that looks at students, uh, in what's called a value-added score, which compares students to where other students of similar abilities are across the state and how much they growed or grew compared to how much our students grew. And then they're able to compare that over time.
Based on what test?
Based on, at this, in, it, it'll depend on the level. So, um, this is where you'll find that at the high school, you don't have a closing gaps because we don't have that data over time. Um, we have only been given now two years of every kid taking ACT, for example. And that value added, I believe, is on a three-year average, or is it a five, do you know Mitch?
Your score is a three-year rolling average. You'll never get, you'll never get it because it's not the same student. At the elementary and the middle school, it's Bobby Smith as a sixth grader, Bobby Smith as a seventh grader, Bobby Smith as an eighth grader. Is he getting closer to being at grade level? How much is he growing, how much is value added to Bobby Smith's education? And at the high school, it's Bobby Smith as a junior, now it's Bobby's brother, Billy Smith as a junior. It, it's, there's not the, the ability to show growth and/or closing any gap at the high school level.
But they're showing growth based on how an individual does at the one year from the next, in their growth?
Yeah, they'll look at, um, the student's growth over that three-year period compared to a student that starts at a similar ability and their growth over a three-year period. You'd get a state average of how many kids, for instance, scored a, a less than proficient score in year one, and then what did they score in year three? Gives you a state average, and then how did our kids score that were just less than proficient compared to all the other state?
So, you compare them at one, at, at freshman and junior, and then junior with other comparables in other schools?
Not the high school.
Not the high school, okay.
Right, but at the, at the elementary, you'd have a growth rate, usually middle school, six, seven, eight, can you get a four, five, six?
Yes.
And this is based on which test?
Forward.
The forward, okay.
Yeah. Or the dynamic learning map, because it's measuring similar skills for students with disabilities.
Then the closing gaps gets specifically into those student populations that usually are traditionally are laying behind the state. Typically, students around poverty, English lang. Typically, students around poverty, English Language Learners, students with disabilities. And they measure how well your students are growing as compared to, again, the state average of growth for those same populations. And then the last one is the on-track readiness. That takes a look at your third grade language arts, your eighth grade mathematics. It just kind of takes these snapshots over time and gives you a composite score.
So, I have a question. So, do our special ed students take these tests?
Depending on the disabilities. So, our students that have significant disabilities would not take the ACT, for example, or the forward exam, they would take the DLM or the Dynamic Learning Maps.
Okay, so, when they, if they take those and it's measurable, when they get to high school and they get to be a senior, do they receive a report card?
Do they receive a report card from the school? Yes.
Okay. A measurable one like A, B, C, D, or do they receive a report card or a certificate?
Well, you mean a diploma?
Yes.
They would receive a diploma. If it's a student with significant learning disabilities, they have an individualized education plan, an IEP. If they're meeting their goals and progressing on the goals that have been determined for them, they are earning their diploma.
The last area is just where you'll see some possible deductions in points. And just wanted to share the thresholds for those deductions. You have to have a low 84% attendance rate to receive a deduction of five points. And you have to have a dropout rate of less than 6% to receive a deduction. And we're well ahead of those, we have no deductions at any building or district level. So, once you understand the, kind of the areas, if you would, then you can kind of dig into each building and look at that sub-data. So, again, this looks at K four to five. And the interesting thing to understand is the comparables in K four through five, and this will become more important with our six through eight middle school, is it only compares you to the state with the same grade configurations, K four to five and six to eight. So, if you have a five-eight middle school, for example, that would not be compared to the middle schools here at Mineral Point. So, we're only looking at comparable subsets of grade levels. So, with that, you can see a little bit of our demographics trends very closely to the district average with regards to our student groups, our race and ethnicity and grade type.
How many schools are in that category of K four through five?
I can look, certainly a lot more pre-K fives or K fives. That's a pretty traditional, six eights. That varies a little bit more because you have some that are elementarys, there's seven, eight configurations, there's five through eights, there's six through nines. So, they'll start to pull out some of the middle schools.
But when you're doing the district-wide comparison, that would bring the middle schools back in, I assume?
That would bring, yes. So, we look at the pre-K 12s, most districts are pre-K 12. You're really pulling out the union districts where they have a union high school that's a 912 district. Those get pulled off the top. A lot of times, the same thing, so I think of Swallow as an elementary building that's in some district pre-K six. And so, they get a really high score because they don't have the middle or high school components feeding into that. But when you pull or tease all of those out, then you're looking at truly the K 12 districts. The district tends to trend appropriately with the majority of districts in the state.
So, we have put this on Facebook and on our webpage. Do we also explain, like you're explaining now, the importance of these numbers and what they show?
Yeah, the actual detail of that is on the second page, so it just comes with the report. So, if anybody wanted to read what the school growth is describing, you can go right to that, Bullet Points, Closing Gaps, or others. So, we don't explicitly do that because it's almost better defined right on the report itself, but that reflects. Matt, do you want to just, I don't want to go through each number, each subcategory, for each school. Anything you would just say in general as you look at this report?
I think the closing the gaps was something we celebrated as a staff. And last year, we really focused in on PLCs, what can we do within the classroom to change our practice to help kids now. And then our RTI, Response Intervention, panel was tightened up, really looked at data versus we felt needed it. And I think that's reflected in the gaps. So, you've met Rachel, you've met Kimberly, I believe, and we have Erin on board. And then just the teachers working together to just be proactive with kids before they get too far behind. So, kudos to them.
Again, anytime you see an NA, two things. If you see a star, that means that the population of students in that category is less than 30. And so, therefore, the data might be able to be determining who those kids might be and therefore, they don't record any scores from populations that are the number of thirty. If you see an NA that's different, that means it's not applicable. So, obviously, their eighth grade mathematics achievement score that feeds into the district level, the third grade ELA, eighth grade math is important in the district, but it doesn't apply to the elementary school. Quickly, just pulling up the middle school. Very similar report card. In that, six eight is compared to, I was wondering if they did say how many schools were six eight. We can, so if anybody is interested, you can go to the DPI website. And they have a spreadsheet that you can pull down for just middle schools. And then it's a sortable spreadsheet with a filter or a list. And as you sort it, you can then see how many schools are in that subset. So, that's some pretty easy data, so they made it easy to data mine that. I just don't know how many we'd be compared to. With that, though, a very favorable report card, I think. Vicki, what was the Milwaukee report that was overall?
Number three of middle school in North State of Wisconsin.
For six eights?
Yep.
So, that's impressive. Anything else that you would share?
I just, you know, give the middle school staff the credit. We don't necessarily have a lot of resources. We don't, our individual classroom teachers are doing a lot of the interventions, the tier one and tier twos. And we're working out a plan to incorporate more tier three to really work with the struggling readers and math students. So, I just can't say enough about the job that the staff has done the last few years down in the, in the middle school level and working on our academic progress.
And our final is the high school report card. And I want to just start by recognizing, again, the demographic trends. 9% over in our high school. And ethnicity rates and subgroups of disabilities and economically disadvantaged trend very similar to the district. So, no outliers there. You'll notice that there's an awful lot of NAs in this report card. A lot of what we were talking about of why the growth patterns don't pertain. The third grade, eighth grade doesn't feed into this, the gaps do not feed into this. And it just really is a focus then on what is reported out, which is the ELA achievement and math achievement are a large part of this report card where there's other factors that are factored into the elementary, middle. Graduation rate, obviously, is not a concern here as well with no deductions. Mitch and I have already met. I think it's important to recognize that the high school is, still exceeds expectations, which is ahead of a vast, vast majority of high schools across the state. But when you look at it compared to just within our own district and we're in our own continuous improvement model, certainly, we want all of our buildings to significantly exceed expectations, which is a very high standard that not a lot of high schools are able to achieve. But we are and have already had conversations around shifts at the high school, and this will continue to be an area of focus for us. Somewhat evidenced by the strategic plan and all of the different areas that we're going to start monitoring for growth. Because that then will lead into some action plans that will actually help us to see how progress.
Mr. Francois, I think too, you can go on the DPI website and you can compare report cards from year to year. And I think that's also important to look at the growth for all of our buildings from, you know, last year to this year.
So, what tests do they look at in determining student achievement at the high school level?
ACT.
Just the ACT?
And the sophomores. Well, the sophomores take the social studies version of the forward exam. But that is not measured on the report card, so basically, it's the ACT. And the English Language Arts score is a one-third combination of the reading, the writing, and then the English portion of the ACT. And that's what goes together to give you the English Language Arts achievement score.
So, again, ahead of the state average. And it's an area that we'll continue to work with. Across the district, we have a tremendous staff. And I credit my predecessors for hiring for talent, a very talented group of teachers, some of which have been even highlighted in today's board meeting in various pieces. But along with that, we continue to be very diligent about making sure that we bring the best possible candidates to the district. And it's become a competitive place to work, which allows us to really be able to pick some high-quality staff to join our team and really impact kids. I've also made some shifts where we've added some strategic positions over time. And I think that has been a big piece of it, some intervention components, instructional coaching components that I think have really helped our school forward. And we'll continue to make those shifts in the strategic plan, helps us to continue to develop. Any questions that we can answer for you?
Why the closing gaps is any for us at the high school?
There's nothing to measure from one year to the next of the same student.
But there is at other schools?
Same, yeah, so. At the elementary school?
No, I mean at other high schools. Because there was a state score. Like if you pull...
Right, I did see that too.
So, I'm curious, is something with juniors and seniors? Or is the population of, the population of both subgroups percentage-wise too low to be measurable?
Yeah.
And they're higher at the other schools, so it's measurable.
Right, so you're looking at, and I'm wondering if this maybe shouldn't be an asterisk, but in order to look at a group of 30 students or more that are with disabilities or with...
Because we don't have enough juniors.
Exactly. It's one of the limitations.
So, it should be an asterisk.
I would agree with that. I'm not sure why not applicable instead of the asterisk. But I think in the larger high schools, you probably see it.
You don't have enough juniors.
It is concerning though, the student achievement, the drop from the middle school, you know, even though it's just the ACT, but I mean, you look at the English, you go in the middle school from a 45 out of 50 to a 34.
It is two different tests as well.
But these are the same tests that the...
I don't know, the eighth grade test is different than the junior test.
But it's the same test that other high schools are being measured against. They're also being measured by the ACT.
Yes. Would that be like, I guess I would say, if I took, if this year I took a beginning reading test and next year I was taking my entrance exam for medical school, my score would be different because it is two different tests that the students are taking.
Are you comparing with other schools though?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the statewide, at the statewide comparison, if you, hold on. The middle school...
The high school is 69 versus 60 on the state.
Right, on the state, but look under it. Look at the English language is 34.8 and the math is 35. And the statewide is 31 and 28. So, it's slightly above the state. And then you go to the middle school. And you see how much higher it is? Under English language, you got 45.8 out of 50, which is significantly above the state average. And in math, it's 44 out of 50. Again, significantly above the state average.
So, what, we, at that point, do we examine curriculum or teacher practices or to get the students leveled higher?
Well, I think Luke said that he's met with Mitch, but I mean, to me, that is concerning. You know, it's wonderful that the school got this report card and that the student achievement at the elementary, middle school is as high. But this is, you know, a 12, 13-year program. And it's how they finish that really matters.
But it is, I agree with you that it is a 12 or 13-year program. And they're in year 11. And a lot of the changes that have been made in the last five or six years have been year one, year two, year three. And now, all of a sudden, middle school math is 50 out of 50. Four years ago, I don't know if that was the case.
And that's what I was wondering, if that was an explanation.
If we need to.
I think it's a part of the explanation in that we have put, and this is maybe one of the criticisms that I received, is that vast amount of our resources and energies are at the elementary. When we talk about intervention. And it's also easier to team at the intervention level with a group of three versus singleton teachers. But as we've bolstered the literacy efforts and changed the math curriculum and so forth at the elementary, these kids are starting to grow into a system that have now filtered up to the middle school. And eventually, those high expectations should filter up to the high school. If we go back to when the report cards started, this is the third report card in fourth year, in four years that we've received. So, really, when we look back, just a four-year look back, those juniors were back in ninth, eighth grade, basically.
So, we should be able to all compare that, eighth grade?
That's the point, is that as this continues to filter up over another three years, when those eighth graders become juniors, have our scores over time then dissipated? Or do they have to maintain?
We have to wait four years? You really, we got all these kids in there now, I certainly like to see.
No, that's not my point, is that we wait four years to see if this group filters up. There's some shifts we can make now that we are currently making to help us raise the high school scores. But we have really boosted our bottom up and those kids are continuing to filter up and creating higher expectations. And we're able to meet them with a higher level of rigor that just increases all of our scores as we go up. So, that's one part, it's not the, it's not the whole story. But we're continuing to make these moves. Again, I don't want to lose sight of this, the high school exceeds expectations. And you got to look at it and step back at how many high schools are significantly, not significantly, exceeding expectations. That's a very, very high standard. But can we improve? Absolutely. And are we doing steps to improve? Absolutely. So, continue to work with us. If you see a flat line for two or three or four years in a row or even a drop, then I think we need to have some tougher conversations. But we will react to this report card, have already reacted to it, and you'll see some continued improvement.
So, what, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, this is the danger of a single score too, is you're subjected to an outside evaluator. I'm not saying it's not useful information, but I think we go back into the strategic plan, we talk about alternative assessments, portfolio assessments, where you can really see how kids progress from this point to this point. It gives us a little bit more ownership of how to...
But this is what you bring to school. So, this means, this means something. This is what you put out there, for example, to buy into us.
Like I said, I don't...
So, that's, that's important.
That's just too much pressure.
Like I said, this is useful information, but I don't want to live and die by this either.
But you know what, the kids are, I mean, it's the ACT score. Counts for half of, you know, the grade. And the ACT score, that's what they get into in colleges. So, it matters.
It matters. And it just can't be useful sometimes and not useful other times. It's useful.
Go ahead, Andrew. Calendar.
The board had requested to bring back a draft of a board meeting calendar. This is the calendar that was originally brought forward in 2014, I believe. Yeah, it was 1415 because I forgot to update the 1718 there, so that gives you a sense of...
There's a number of those. I was like 1816, interesting.
Yeah, my apologies. In my haste to get things up and running and competing interests, I made a few errors. But I roll with it and understand that this is just a first draft. It was kind of bringing back, where did we leave this off at 2014? We're looking at policy governance. What would those monitoring courses look like on a monthly basis? What are those things that we know come back into the discussion in the fold? And I was just thinking today, I wanted to see if it was here. Because January is when we always do open enrollment. And so, that would probably be the time that if we're going to look at open enrollment numbers, we want to also put on our agenda our board policy just to revisit our class sizes to make sure that that's something that we continue to retain is something we want to do. So, you'll see the class size policy come back in January. We'll make our open enrollment determinations about whether we're open or closed in certain grade levels or buildings and likewise down the road. So, just a draft, it's a starting point, it's a... So just a draft, it's a starting point, it's a discussion, give me your feedback.
Well, I wanted specifically ask for some kind of model for this because I think this is where we, as a board, get in on the right discussion about budgets at the right time, instead of coming in at the end. And so that's what I want to be clear about, is, you know, when does the budget start? When do the teachers have to have their deadlines for? When do you make the, cut their needs and not needs? And then we ask about those things.
And just so you know, this tracks a policy on that. We have a policy that says what the budget process is, and it's something that Luke drafted a couple of years ago, pretty much.
Then why were we coming in on the end asking teachers questions when we should have been asking in January or February or March?
The policy doesn't include a recent shift within the last two years that reflects purchases in excess of $5,000 need board approval. That wasn't part of the original policy scope and sequence. And so, again, teachers with budget for an item that might be over 5,000, that budget is approved, and then when we get to the actual time to make the purchase, then it would be under the board to make a final determination on that. And we've already determined that it was a priority in the budgeting process to bring that forward after two years of kind of having the, too late, and now, now we're realizing that maybe we should have kind of approved before we budgeted for it. We'll see that come out most likely in April at the earliest, May, most likely, timeline for that.
And I don't know if you have in here, you know, in recent years, have been doing a technology budget, you know, some specific other budgets that seem like they come every year at the same time.
You will see that January has the capital maintenance budget, that's typically where we bring that in. And technology has been part of that capital on some levels, but it's not, it's a good note to maybe just line that out. The idea is to keep it at a high enough level that it just guides us, because this alone doesn't take into all the other stuff that's going to come into a meeting. So we've got some long meetings here, and we're going to try to keep them short.
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, this, we brought this up because it was the two, two work session, or work session board meeting a month. I mean, that's where this came from, when we started talking about it, right? So I mean, I think this does not stand alone, I mean, we have to govern at a high level to follow something like this, otherwise, we're going to be in the same scenario. So I mean, I think understanding, just having this plan and not actually governing at that level is not going to matter.
Right, this plan went along with, like, the student achievement reports, I mean, that was my favorite part, was that it was having to go and actually focus on student achievement, which seems like...
That was great. Yep.
So I like this, I mean, can we move forward with this? Can you make it your own and bring it back to the board? I mean, this is just same way we left off.
Yeah, the board might want to approve the calendar officially, and then we could start to move forward a minute.
Approve this calendar?
Or do you want, the annual work plan, you know, in, this would guide me in the agenda setting, if this is what the board would like to see on a month-to-month basis. You would then know that these are the reports that are going to come forward.
Why don't you revise this and bring it back?
You want it to be a little bit condensed, or...
Well, I think the superintendent's finance chair to present the preliminary budget is in May, and I think that's, that's a little bit late. Why can't that be done in April?
It just always gives us time to get solicitations out to staff, get their solicitations back. Now we have another step to meet with the board and to approve any expenses over 5,000, so that would have to be at the, if we're doing this in April, in the March board meeting?
That is actually part of the policy. I don't remember what it is, 600 and something?
Yeah.
That sets for the whole process, so...
Do they want to pull that policy and look at it?
621, I'm hearing, 622. But that's what I'm saying, what, I mean, at the next meeting, could you bring this back and some...
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, the thing is...
Does the policy say the exact dates?
It says May, June. Well, there's other things that precede it.
I think we should be clear though about what you're talking about. Are you looking for May as a time when you're gonna, when we're gonna have some sort of report from the principals and we're going to be able to ask questions about what the teachers are requesting?
Well, I just, I just don't want us to fall into what happened in September. Regardless of what happened at the state level, you know, there were some frustrated teachers when we started asking questions, and that should not happen then. And I do think that some of those questions were valid. So then we look like, you know, the questions were all okay, but not at the right time. So I'm trying to get at how we fit into it at the proper time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's why, I mean, you should, have you looked at that, the board?
I will, but I'm also, and I, I've also asked other schools, you know, what their timeline is, I mean, former superintendents, what their timeline is, and it just seems a bit later. That's why I brought it up.
Well, it'd be good to know, I mean, we can review that policy, whatever it is, 622 or...
Business services. Oh, we skipped over the...
For treating the policy, 220 to 250. Without going through each policy, is there any that somebody would like to pull off and further discuss in committee, or sort of carry it back as a second meeting in the next meeting?
I suppose, I mean, if people have comments, we can make them at the next meeting. Or see someone waiting.
Business services, credit card, and bills payable, we will make one motion to resolve. Motion by Jeff, he has a second. Second by Larry Dalton. Any questions, discussion?
I have a question. The rent for the alternative school, is that one month or is that a half a year?
I believe that's half a year.
How much was it this year?
4,000. We had budgeted for the year 8,000.
Yeah, that's six months. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Bastin?
I'm staying.
Bush?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Gunna?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Stevenson?
I'm staying.
Stetson?
Yes.
Purchase of excess of $5,000. The district desires to install a secured entrance at the elementary. We do have a vendor that has submitted a proposal. This, the vendor is Gabor Construction LLC, working in conjunction with Quality Door and Hardware, which is the vendor that does our doors throughout the district, so it would be a similar locking mechanism and system to match existing. The project total is $14,890 for construction and hardware. I do have the numbers now in from Johnson Control for the door reader and the ability to buzz in with the position switch and the exit motion. So the final project total is $19,027, would be for all three components.
Where's the board construction on?
Platteville.
Have they done commercial work before?
Yes.
And what have they done?
They have done, I could get some actual references for you, but there are even multiple staff members in the district that have used this construction firm, and are familiar with the word quality.
And will we approve it?
Motion by Lisa, who has a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Julie.
What is this for?
Yeah.
When it, when it would be...
In the summer?
It would actually be scheduled for spring break. The original plan was to do it over Christmas break. We didn't have any vendors submit a proposal. It takes about, I'm hearing, eight to 12 weeks to get the doors in and ordered and frames and such with the hardware. But we would be able to then install over spring break with this revised timetable.
Are the dates on there?
Not for the actual installation.
Should, should they be?
No, it's just, that's the way we'll coordinate it.
And the budget, does this fit within the budget?
It does fit in with our capital budget. There's really two items that we had budgeted, which was the dust collector system and the door, it's, it's close to that budget limit. So we may have to shift some dollars at the end of the day to amend the budget, but it's definitely within our budget to be able to do this project.
And the door construction will coordinate the state, state-approved plans by our agents?
That, that part was done with FEH, whatever the FEH, the proposal submitted by the state.
If we don't have dates on it, we might end up like the dust collector and go on for like, what, six, seven months? I mean, why don't we have dates on there?
Well, right now, all we have is approval of the vendor, and then once we do that, we would sign a contract with the vendor, and we can make sure that the dates will include an installation period.
I mean, I think that's a wise thing to do, or otherwise, something could happen and we're waiting again.
Is that the only thing we have?
It's the only thing we have, yeah.
We had $200,000 in capital, I thought we had moved that because of Act 32.
We can take a pause and I can just pull up the account quick and see...
I mean, we can afford it either way.
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering if you're remembering something that I'm not recalling.
We're just shifting, we may have to do an amendment to capital, you're saying?
Yeah, we may have to do an amendment, a budget amendment, but I can pull...
Separately to...
That's what I was recalling.
The elementary door.
I thought we had, and then we had knowledge that it would be completed.
Last year's budget potentially?
Because we didn't have any dips on it as one of the ones.
Yeah, maybe.
We did the other piece outside of the revenue.
Did the hairless sketch really come up like?
It was the sketch that was in the request for proposal that FEH put together, so that's the sketch that they would be working off of.
You don't have to look.
I don't think I have looked.
If there's 15 or 19,000 in a budget amendment in from another account, that's suits the same.
Between our...
I don't know, we can amend, I don't count two capital projects and that's it.
Yeah, if you want to move on, I can come back with that on the table and then come back to it, that's fine too, but...
Yeah, we got the other table. Well, okay, so remove the motion?
Till later, just till later in the meeting.
Oh.
Are you good, Angie?
She's really good. It's, the question is, are we going to remember what we were doing? Angie's got it.
So the motion's been tabled till the end of the meeting. We will, I mean, that includes the agenda of a closed session now, and what...
If we're moving, we're moving employee services on into closed?
The employee services one is not in closed session. It's just a motion of...
No, I don't, there's a whole thing before this.
That's the reason we want to go into closed session.
That's the reason we want to go into closed session.
But the agenda states that we are, whether we're approving this position, this person into that position.
So do you want to move into that, or do you want to...
Tell the room. Guide us, Luke. Can we go into closed session with the approval of instructional assistant?
Do you want to discuss the evaluation of the hire itself, the person? Yes. To approve the position, no, but, you know, if you're talking about the people and, and...
How do we get, how do we get out in the open, how the hiring was done for the special education teacher down to this person? Because that's what's cloudy with everyone, and that's why we don't have any trust with the public, is because we are not listening to our parents, to the parents and the letters that come through, and we've received two letters.
We can certainly talk about the hiring process, and that doesn't have to go into closed session. If you want to evaluate the candidates that were selected, then that would go into closed session.
Of the special education person, right?
Well, the assistant.
The assistant?
Name on the agenda.
We, if, if we don't address the special education issue and the hiring of the special education teacher and how it got to this, we have not done our due diligence at how that person came into being. There are really unhappy parents out there. And again, we're going to take the brunt of that mistrust because of administration.
So is the, is the thing that we need to be discussing, admit, a performance, a reevaluation, or a conversation about...
How, how a process was done, who got hired? Everything with special education around that vacancy.
This person here that's on the agenda, can we just talk about what she's hired to do and why?
Yeah. She, so the district recommends approval of Ms. Ewart. She is an instructional assistant, and she'll be working specifically with the needs for Hunter.
Hold on, what do they say? What are you saying?
I'm saying that Avery and Kelly had that we need to go into closed session, and she wants to talk about individual names, and that covers us.
But not this individual?
It's not, I mean...
There's the process prior to this that she wants to discuss.
There was something that we had discussed a meeting or two back, where you can make adjustments to your agenda the night of the meeting.
I'm not aware of anything that allows for that. How does that allow the public to know what we're talking about?
Kelly, Kelly's crying something here and it's like...
I personally understand this person that's on the agenda, and see if there's even a connection, because I don't, I'm not following...
Oh, sorry. I was like, it's right here.
Is, do you have, you have concern with the physician or this person, Kelly?
I want to talk to both physicians, how that physician arrived, and who she replaces, and who they replaced, and who they replaced, because look at it has, Abby replaces Kate, Kate replaces Blair, replaces Bethany, so...
And there's names involved, yeah, let's go to closed session. Jeff, you're going to make a motion?
Kelly did, I'll second it.
Okay, you're going to make a motion for a closed session?
I make a motion for a closed session.
Pertaining to the position and the individual's name?
Yes.
Jeff seconded, roll call.
Yes. Hey?
I'm going to say no, only because I feel like there maybe is stuff we could talk about in open session about what the process is. And if we got to the point where we were talking about individuals, then I think we should go into closed session, but it's not apparent to me that we're there yet, so I'm waiting on that.
Stevenson?
Yes, with, I mean, based on what you just said, right, that we are going to talk about this particular hire, because I agree with Lisa, so based on what your motion was, yes.
And names associated.
We're sticking to that.
And names associated to it. It's right there listed.
I know, I see it.
Okay. Bastin?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Dalton?
Yes.
Stetson?
Yes. So we are back in open session. And we, on the agenda, we are on our employee services approval of an instructional assistant. I will open it up for discussion from, from the public, specifically agenda for John. However, I need to ask, and we need to enforce, that I do think that position that could be a down, for performance of any person in a position.
Angie, I forgot how to word this. I don't know how to word it without it being identifiable. I don't know how to word it without it being identifiable.
Special ed in general, can you just say that?
Just, just say the title, don't say your first name.
Please, no position either.
Oh, no position either, yeah.
Just special ed department in general, in general.
Special ed department? Oh, I did, I can't think of a way to say it without... I mean, can you talk just about your experience, like whatever, like your experience in... Um, in my experience, I have found that my child is not being taught to read and specifically he has a reading disability. The transitions from fifth grade to sixth grade have been unbelievably huge. Because in fifth grade, he's got his spec ed teacher with him in co-teaching classes along with having the end of the day with, with this, with this teacher getting... At the end of the day, so he's got everything fresh in his mind that he's learned all throughout the day. He gets to work with that teacher in a small group at the end of the day. So he's getting, he was doing great. Tests were going up, things were going really, really well. We now transitioned to sixth grade. We don't, I should back up a little bit. We start with, we do his IEP in January. The middle school spec ed department is not there. So we don't know who we're going to deal with next year when we move to sixth grade. We have no idea. The IEP goes until January of a sixth grade year, which makes absolutely no sense whatsoever because everything in sixth grade is completely different from everything in fifth grade. You're going from elementary to middle school, you're switching classes, you've got different teachers, the whole schedule is completely different. So his IEP is useless. So there's that. I'm finding what a fool I am because I'm told that, okay, well, we're gonna do this, we're doing this and this and this and this and this for Cooper. Okay, well, yeah, that's fine. Well, let's just not put that in there if you guys are just doing that throughout the day anyways. That doesn't make any sense to him, put that in his IEP. So now he gets up to middle school, it's not his IEP, it's not written in stone, so it doesn't apply to him. All this extras that he was getting to help him succeed, to make him a reader, doesn't apply to him in sixth grade. Because we're now in middle school, that IEP, it wasn't written there. He's got different teachers, nobody knows. Nobody knows about that. Have signatures that the teachers all read his IEP, but yet in sixth grade conferences, I'm talking to his teachers and they're going, what do you mean? He's supposed to have frequent breaks because his brain is tired. Well, that is actually written in his IEP. So he should be able to go and get drinks and come back and be refreshed and ready to go. Because his brain drains trying to learn at the same speed as the other children. It doesn't work. He doesn't learn the same way. So he's trying ten times harder to keep up with these kids right now. So now he's stupid. He's lazy. He doesn't want to learn. That's what he's been labeled as. The kids labeled him as stupid. The teachers have been labeling him as lazy and that he does not want to learn. That's what my child has not been labeled in sixth grade. Before he was diagnosed and we were going through transitions in elementary school with principals I wished we would have had met years before. He was labeled as he has anger management issues. Come to find out, he did not have anger management issues, he was frustrated. He was up, he was frustrated, he wasn't getting it. And the kids are making fun of him. We didn't know this. And now, we had a person that would fight for him. I don't know who we have now. I don't know this person. I know that he knows nothing of dyslex, this person knows nothing of dyslexia or how to teach it. Half the staff, three-fourths of the staff here don't know how to teach it. I've now taken my child to Madison, to the Wild Foundation, and been made a bigger fool of because he's looking at my IEP and he's saying, so how are they teaching him to read? I go, what do you mean, how are they teaching him to read? It's in his IEP. No, this is how they're accommodating to his disability. They're not teaching your child how to read. What a naive fool I am. And this is the beginning of what I think is gonna be one hell of a long frigging middle school years. And now we have now lost half a year that he's gotta make up to staff that are not fully trained, that don't know. I don't know where else to go or what to do. I don't know how to word things, I've had to specifically ask how to get things worded. So my child isn't getting innocent screwed. I don't know what else to do. And that's why I'm here till god hours of the night with you guys when I've gotta be up in a few hours to head back to work. And which I'm hoping will not affect his IEP come the twentieth. Because I've got it rescheduled for a staff member that does not know my child, that cannot legally do IEPs. Has no experience in it.
I'll ask a little question. Can an IEP be changed?
Absolutely.
On a parent's request?
Absolutely.
Written request.
I have another question. Could, could one of the special ed teachers from the elementary school be involved in this?
Absolutely.
I have, I've actually, I requested the reading specialist from the elementary school get moved up into our IEP. I did that actually today.
I have one more question. So when your child moved into the sixth grade, there was somebody, you said there was somebody in the sixth grade that was fighting for your child or?
And the...
In the...
She left. In sixth grade that was gonna fight for my child, she left.
Okay, okay, that's the person.
Yes. And when we got, and there's some major issues with transitions with spec ed that need to be dealt with, especially with, you know, with Cooper having that eighth period. He then went to sixth grade with first period and it was just a study hall. It's just a special study hall. It, it doesn't have his caseworker with him. And if it does, it's with ten other students, fifteen other students. Whoever's in that study hall that's assigned to that study hall and it's not necessarily with his caseworker, it's the first, just the first period study hall. And the classes that he used to like, he don't like them no more. We're getting D pluses if we're lucky. I think I saw a C minus on his last progress. So now he's, he's slipping in other classes. I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, and John, if all your kids are at an advantage because you're here at ten thirty and they're fighting for their kids, you definitely don't ever forget that.
But do, should we be doing this or should we be having these people? Should we have to work this hard? Should I be working this hard to make sure that? I feel like I have to, I have to know, I have... It's like, it's like trying to be informed to a courtroom and being a lawyer when you don't have, when you've never been to law school. That's the way I feel when I go into these IEPs. There are so many laws and rules and regulations and I feel like they're being used against my child instead of for my child. Do you get what I'm saying?
Are you understanding?
And we're finding the loopholes against him and making loopholes to make things unaccommodating instead of accommodating at some points.
Generally, my advice is usually no good, but again, you're in charge, Jan. If you want more reading time for your son, get it.
And I'm now learning that, but in the meantime, I was really truly felt like I was a naive fool. And that was what I was made to feel.
Is there some other resources that parents could utilize when, you know?
I already have that set for my IEP and I've got the wording set out for my child. And the problem is, is that I'm not sure if I'm gonna get it approved because it's gonna cost over five thousand dollars for just my child. And that would be an intervention through Wild for three terms.
Explain one more time, what was on those five thousand?
An intervention?
Oh, a thousand.
A reading intervention, I have to ask for it during my IEP, my child's IEP. An intervention, a reading intervention for my child through Wild. That is, and Wild is the Wisconsin, okay, I gotta think of it. W I Institute of Learning Disabilities and Dyslexia or Dyslexia and Disabilities. In Madison, Herb Carpenter and Kim Carpenter, they run it. And they, they actually train staff and they do workshops to help identify it. And I have all that paperwork at home, I wasn't actually planning on getting into all of this stuff tonight. And I was going to bring, that's my plan for his IEP. But it costs over five thousand dollars for a three-year term.
Any comments on the, um, the hire gen? What's on the agenda of the...
I don't know the new hire. I don't, I don't know if I, I don't, I, I don't know Cooper's caseworker well enough to think that an art, an art teacher should be...
John, any comment?
Tough enough to cross that line. We've had too many repercussions in the past. I guess I will ask you, if you were a parent and you had to put a math teacher that had to teach algebra two in with your high school, middle school students, would you accept anything less than somebody that's trained in algebra to teach that class? Would you accept the possibility that they will work our classes for their masters for algebra two in the future? Possibly, if they so choose, would you accept that? Would you want your student to go through three years of classes while that teacher learns how to do that job? Is that the best, most qualified candidate for that position?
I understand your concern, John. I would, I would monitor it if, if the administration recommended these, these switches in position and new hires. I certainly would monitor the success of my child and on, on a daily basis. And if there were problems, address them.
There's the question on...
It's too late, it's already happened.
And the, well, that's the question that we're having trouble, problems. Are we the one that needs to be doing the education for our child and fighting for our child? We need to have this, we need to have the staff and the people there that know what they're doing, that can do this for us because we don't always know what we can be doing for our child. All we can do is fight for them and know that something's wrong. And that's what the spec ed department is supposed to do. They're supposed to be making, putting our children up to the level of everybody else. And that's not happening. And I don't blame John for walking out. He is so frustrated right now. I mean, I mean, how, how much, how much can we talk about it before something gets done? I mean, I can, I can, I can be BSed and that's the way I feel right now. And I can, I don't know.
You're doing the right thing by coming to us and expressing what's happening with you and, um...
I want everything done for my child to have him up to the same level as his peers and not to be the stupid lazy one. I don't want my child to be that.
We're gonna have something on the, at the next regular meeting. There will be something on the agenda. We haven't quite figured out how to phrase it, but there'll be another opportunity to talk about special ed. I mean, this is a bad transition that this was...
It's a horrible transition. And, and the bad thing is, is that I called it. I called it that this was gonna happen. What are we gonna find in the middle of a school year? So now my child loses a year, every child in the spec ed loses a year. If we're lucky to get somebody next year, but the reputation is being slowly shot down for our spec ed department. Who's gonna wanna work here? I don't know, I don't, I don't know what chances to give you guys. Yes, he was told it was a little dot's fault. It is not your fault, Cooper, it's that little dot called processing is yours. I wish he was still a teacher. I really wish he was. He's an incredible man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the, uh, the hire. Motion by Julie, seconded by Lisa. Any other discussion?
I'll be abstaining, I wrote a letter of recommendation for the hire.
Okay. Roll call, Angie.
Stevenson?
Yes. Sorry, did she say it looking hard or...
Bastin?
I've lost consciousness.
Oh, sorry. He's off, is he?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
He should have told you.
I should have marked Dolphin.
I'm abstaining.
Gama?
No.
Hey. Stefan?
Yes. Larry, did you abstain for a reason?
I don't know what you're even trying to talk about.
For hiring an assistant, to replace an assistant, is it?
And is that assistant gonna be with your child?
No.
Then why is she so excited about it?
Because...
Her excitement had nothing to do with it.
Had nothing to do with us hiring, but...
Oh, okay. She's going back to not have.
Or two.
Do you want to change your vote?
Huh?
Do you want to change your vote?
If it wasn't about this person, now I feel yes.
Thank you, Larry.
And Andy, you abstained?
I did.
Okay.
Policy five thirty-three. You have a motion to approve policy five thirty-three with the change.
Okay, sorry. I'm, I'm moving through it.
Motion over to you in a second.
The, yes, I'll, I'll second it.
To take the parent out of higher professional.
We're gonna vote on this?
Yeah.
So what's, what's the motion?
Policy five thirty-three. No, that's the end of the meeting.
We're gonna bring five thirty-three up to the...
Parents that are teaching, no teachers, no assistants, higher officers, anyone else, just teachers. Was, was it discussed in the session of major warning?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said taking...
That's the way that...
The way it's written, so approve it the way it's, your motion is to approve it the way it's presented?
Presented.
Which is that we are not allowing parents to sit down and interview with teachers, but anyone else in the district can be hired with paranormal committee, just not teachers.
Correct.
And the staff roles advisory and all this discussion is not...
And I want to put in there that we see your licensure. I emailed you that, Lisa?
You emailed me a big, long policy. Was that the consent that you wanted?
It wasn't a big, long policy, it was just a short, it was a short thing.
What I saw was a page and a half long.
Do you look at the lessons when they apply?
They have to...
Let's go down this, because I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
I'm voting no.
They submitted with the...
All right. So any other questions on five thirty-three? So there's been a motion and a second. Don't favors say aye?
No.
No, let's, let's...
We should roll call this.
A roll call, okay.
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Bastin, oh, sorry. Bush? Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Now, we're ruling to accept it the way it is right now?
With the yellow, can you put it up?
I know what, it was up there before.
Right.
I'll get it picked up here, there it is.
It's to have it with the yellow and the crossouts to change it and reflect that...
It hasn't changed from what's in your pack, but it's...
Okay. For Lord, may not have a parent?
Right.
For teachers.
For teachers only.
Oh, yes, I mean, it's gonna pass.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Gunma?
No.
Stefan?
Yes. There was one other thing.
We have one other thing?
Capital payments for the door. The budget has, um, different pockets of capital, you're correct, we know the line items, we moved the energy efficiency out, or the line item out for the dust collector for energy efficiency, didn't hold a spot for the door, but I'm confident that coupling, I already know Matt's office remodel that he pre-approved was less than what he had budgeted for. And if I put a bunch of pockets of capital projects that don't spend down all their money together, I'm confident by the end of the year that we would be able to, to have that fully amended. So it would have to be a board amendment to make that, that purchase, but I, I think it's something we just can't wait on any longer.
By spring.
By spring, yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely listen towards that.
It's been looming over us for quite a while. So there's already been a motion and a second, right? Angie?
Um, no, we didn't have, oh, yes. Lisa moved to approve, Jen seconded. It's already good to go.
Roll call?
Hey.
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Gunma?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
That's a $19 dollar.
For the Dolphin.
Does that conclude the agenda? That concludes the agenda. Just a reminder that we have an expulsion hearing on Wednesday, December 13th, 6:30 right here in this room. And then the next board meeting is Monday, January 8th at 6:30.
How long do you anticipate?
Less than an hour.
I think we should wait until we pass anything.
It's only a four minutes until the...
Yeah, we might have thrown good money in.
Less than 30.
Bad money after good or good after bad? How do you say that?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll wait.
Yeah, I'll second.
By Larry, seconded by Lisa, third by Lisa. Don't favors say aye?
Aye. So Larry, who should we, Kelly?